Have a couple of people connecting to audio. I see Marcus just now connected and we should have him on. We've got Jeff on video.
Do you see Mark?
He's coming in.
There we go.
I'm trying to get it all happening.
You got, you got it.
I got it.
Oh, are we all here yet?
Let me test my sound. Good, anybody?
Oh, there you are. There's Jeremy. Yeah, we can hear you. Great.
That's a surprise.
All right. Well, we're all here. It is six thirty one. So I would like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of June twentieth, two thousand and twenty two. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org slash virtual meeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must, but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raise hand button. I think that's still down at the bottom of the screen. Ah, there's a graphic. Great. And when the, click that button when the public hearing for the item is opened. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute each from each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. And I'll just remind everybody that once we've closed the public hearing. Uh, it is our discretion whether we want to hear from anybody on any further matters. So if you raise your hand and we don't answer, that's why. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Commissioner Witten.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chair Hill.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And an approval of the agenda, please?
I approve the agenda. Staff recommends with item four A, continue to date uncertain.
Uh, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Richard, you look like you need to say something.
Yes, I was gonna ask, Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's five A.
Broad Beach. Three, one, three, four, oh, Broad Beach.
Yes, the applicant, uh, we had a conversation with them this afternoon. And in light of the, the comments that were received from the California Coastal Commission. Uh, in order to prepare response to them, uh, the applicant had requested a continuance to the eighteenth of July.
Okay, I'm in my motion to include five A continued to the July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty two.
Uh, yeah, just for the sake of argument, uh, do we necessarily just automatically grant them to that? Grant them that or might we want to just go ahead and hear it and keep the ball moving along?
Why would you do that?
Uh, well, yeah, uh, just.
We've, we've never denied an applicant's request for a continuance, at least. Not in the last twelve years or so.
Yeah, okay, just, just thinking out loud, that's all. Um, okay, so John, you're making an amendment?
I'm amending it, but I have a question for Richard. Um, due to the, uh. This is of the coastal letter. Uh, is the applicant? They have time to change anything in that period of time if they want to? And have you come out with a new staff report or is this just going to be a defense?
It's, I can go ahead and speak to that. It's my understanding that, um, the, our coastal engineering staff is going to review what was submitted. Um, from the coastal commission and provide a response. I believe most of the items were addressed in the previously. Um, issued coastal engineering report provided by their expert. But they want to go point, point, point in response to those items to provide that to the coastal commission.
Okay, and we can always extend. Uh, okay.
Are, are we talking continuing to a specific date or date uncertain?
Oh, this is Ju- July eighteenth.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Commissioner Jennings, do you accept the, the change to, uh, continue?
Yes, sorry, yes. Yes, I do.
Thank you, Commissioner Maza.
Oh, Dan, hang on. Dennis has a question.
Can we just hang on to all this paperwork? So you're not gonna redo all of it or, or it's gonna change, I guess, with the, never mind it with the points. But the, never mind, go, apologize.
Um, actually, if you, if the commissioners would hold on to your existing plan sets, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. And then call the role.
Yeah.
Um, Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Witten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Chair Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, may we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on June tenth, two thousand and twenty two.
All right, thank you. So, um, let's see. So we're up to having no ceremonial presentations. We're up to item two A, public comment. Uh, roughly how many speakers do we have out there?
Uh, it was a little bit of a last minute scramble to get some correspondence over to you. The, I'm going to double check that, but I believe we only had one person signed up as a speaker.
Okay. Was there correspondence later than the coastal letter that was sent to us?
Yes, I sent you a letter from the applicant team for five A just before the start of the meeting. Maybe seven, eight minutes before the meeting began. Uh, we have two speakers.
But that's, that's moot now, right? Since we're.
It is.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, but we have two speakers for public comment.
Okay, well, let's hear from somebody.
Um, so we're going to begin with Mark Olson, followed by Ryan Embry.
All right, welcome, Mark. Can we hear you?
I, I actually don't see Mark in the meeting.
I'm scrolling through. I don't see him in here either and seeing, uh, Brian Embry is present in the meeting.
All right, Ryan, you're up.
Yes, I wanted to again, uh, make my comments for the record that the, um. The city, um, planning and council and, and staff have approved a project for the Santa Monica College. Yet, um, the property at two, three, five, five, five Civic Center Way. Has an illegal antenna tower. Or if you call it a pole, has been installed at that site, which is absolutely one hundred percent unacceptable. And non-compliant with the city's telecommunications laws. And the procedures and public hearings and notice. And everything else, the height is way beyond anything even necessary. For the sheriff or the county or the fire department to continue operating their two-way radio system. In the civic center area. So I just wanted to go on record again and ask the city staff if and why. This has not been referred to the city's, uh, code. Um, contract prosecutors, DePere, Litback and, and the whole bit, the West Los Angeles law firm. That the city has contracted with to ensure compliance with our laws. I understand it's a public agency, but this is a perverted commercialization. And, uh, some trickery involved here to try and resurrect. Something that has been demolished. And we've heard this joke of an argument for some. Improper restaurant up, uh, the bluff at, at Canaan. That built on the neighbor's property and didn't get permits and they wanted to tear it down and they ought to be able to rebuild it back the way it, or where it was, you know, to code or something or other later, just because it existed once. Um, without a destruction or disaster in the interim. So we're seeing applicants try to be creative and I don't care if they say this might work during an emergency. It is not an emergency communications tower. It is not held in reserve. It is not. A substitute or contingency plan as an alternate location for a primary transmitter location. This is the primary transmitter location. And I want it very clear that all these concepts I bring here now are for the record, and I'm sorry if the staff will have to somewhat transcribe it. But this is a highly contentious issue and we want the city. To explain why this is not being torn down right now because it is bolted together. And just like those light poles at Malibu High School, it can be disassembled and removed. And it can lay flat on the ground during any pending approval, application process and so forth. So I really want to hear from the city staff report on this. And if they're not going to disclose why a public agency can't comply with the city of Malibu's public law. I want to know why, because I find that personally unacceptable. That there would be deference or a workaround granted to a public agency and that involves politics. So I'm sorry to put the staff on the spot. I think Richard might have some great news for us and I'm waiting for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Um, are people hearing me? Yes, okay. Um, I see Joe Drummond.
Yes, we have Joe Drummond in the meeting with a raised hand.
All right, Joe, hi, are you there?
Oh, hi, yeah, I just wanted to second what Ryan was saying about the antenna at the Santa Monica College. I just passed by with my daughter and it's, it's absolutely hideous. It's huge. It's. It's way bigger than it should be and all those platforms are ridiculous. I'm just wondering what's going to go, go on? Is it going to be taken down? What's happening with this? That's all. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Joe. Uh, does anybody see Mark Olson in the meeting?
I did not see him in the meeting. If anyone else is present in the meeting and would like to speak under public comment, please raise your hand using the button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none.
Okay, and seeing none, then we're on to commissioner and staff comment. Um, commissioners, anybody would like to go?
Jeff.
Yes, um. I have some questions addressed to Richard. Um, Richard, two weeks ago in the meeting. Pardon me. Uh, you talked to us about, uh. And the words you use were, uh, putting a hold on the option for projects that are not yet received. Uh, notice of determination and, um. The, the implication being that those that had received. Uh, notice of determination and moved on to building and safety. Uh, they weren't mentioned. The implication was that they are continuing to, to process. Um, is that the case? Or, uh, not? Uh, the, the question is, uh, the second question is, what does hold mean? Uh, does it mean that the planners who were working on these projects? Have put down their pencils and are no longer working on them? Or are the projects continuing to be processed? But just won't receive a notice of determination until the option for issue is resolved somehow. And I, I guess the next question is, you announced that a hold had been put, but my question is whose decision was that? Was that your decision? Was it the city manager's decision or was it somebody else's decision? And are the projects that are. That, that have received, um. Planning approval but have not yet received building and safety approval. Uh, are they all being treated the same way? In other words, is building and safety. Uh, have they put down their pencils or are they continuing to process the applications but just will not issue? Whatever final approval looks like, I guess, a building permit. And, um. So those are my questions.
Richard?
Certainly. Uh, so to answer your questions, Commissioner Jennings, sorry, I was writing down here, so make sure I get them all. And. The, the hold that we've placed on them, what that means is that anybody that has a. An application currently under review in the planning department, uh, the planning department is not issuing any approvals. Nor are we, um, issuing. Uh, any notices of applications, uh, for the twenty, to begin the twenty-one day review period, say if there was a request for a reduced setback. Or reduced, or excuse me, or a height above eighteen feet. So. On, on the staff side, we are not necessarily just putting the pencils down. We're. We are looking at the applications, but we aren't issuing any decisions. The ones that have already been approved by the planning department. And are currently under plan check. and are currently under plan check, at this time, yes, we're stamping those or ones that are in construction can continue. It's just that no new decisions until we resolve this and I believe unless something's changed in the last week, this will go before the council for direction on. In terms of the decision to place the hold, that was something that came from discussions with the city's city attorney office and also the city manager and then myself. And a lot of this boils down to essentially, we've received comment from the Coastal Commission. As you know, it wasn't it came from a staff member, didn't come from the executive director or the manager of the Ventura Office. It was a staff person. But the concern, and I agree with our city attorney on this, is that we've been put on notice and we don't want to lead anybody down a path to where they could have a an application or a decision rendered, spend money on it that is questioned or may be termed to be invalid. So that is why between the city manager's office, city attorney's office and myself that that plan was put together. I hope I covered all of the situations in your question and answered.
If I may, let me follow up. It appears that the applications that are in the planning department are being treated differently from the applications that have passed the planning department and are now in building and safety. If I understood you correctly, you're saying that building and safety projects are moving forward with no hold and are eligible to receive whatever stamp of approval building and safety gives at the end of that process. Is that correct or not correct?
Yes, because a decision was rendered prior to us receiving that email from Coastal.
And what is the rationale for treating those that are in planning differently from those that are in building and safety?
It's based on the issuance of the director's decision, the date of the issuance of the director's decision.
Okay, the numbers you've given in the past have I'm trying to put them together. Last time we were here, I think you you mentioned twenty-six applications that were subject to the hold and that is applications that are in the planning department but have not yet received the planning stamp of approval. Is that correct?
That is, or have not yet received a decision from the planning department. We have not issued an approval.
Secondly, how many are in the have have passed planning but are still in building and safety? In other words, not in construction?
I
The number, I'm sorry, the number was, I've heard was forty-five and I'm just trying to figure out whether the forty-five includes the twenty-six or is that in addition to the twenty-two?
And it includes that number, correct, Jessica?
Yeah, so the forty-five is that are already approved, APRWF's already approved or beyond ten percent square footage. And that number twenty-six were the projects that are on hold and those are for only projects that are adding square footage beyond ten percent. That's not inclusive of other projects that might be adding other site improvements such as swimming pools, landscape or other improvements like that. We haven't been able to run those numbers yet.
So so even though the the provision of the exemption provision in the LIP talks about improvements to an existing home. It was just sort of where the debate lies, right? Because are the homes that burned down existing homes or are they no longer existing? But you're saying that you're only putting a hold on projects that are that have applied to to allow additional square footage. But you you putting a hold on those, but you are allowing projects that are using that exemption, that same exemption provision. The one that allows tools, tool sheds and swimming pools and and yoga studios and whatever, you're allowing those to proceed forward toward and will receive planning department approval. Is that correct?
No, no, I'm sorry for the confusion. It's anybody who's utilizing that exemption because of the the issue you raised as you were speaking, the question of what is existing. And so that's one of the issues that we want to better understand from the Coastal Commission because the LCP does not contain a definition of existing. There are definitions in there of what is considered new development and what isn't considered new development. These rebuilds are not considered as new development per the language of the LIP in the definition section.
Let me focus. I understand where you're going, but let me focus the question a little more particularly. Are is it only the projects that are adding additional square footage over and above the ten percent that are on hold? In other words, if you are, if you were doing a PV plus ten percent and a swimming pool and a garage and a horse barn, that's okay, that you can move that project forward and get planning approval?
No, anybody who's trying to use that exemption is on hold because I hope that answers it.
That's better. Yeah, okay. So so you don't know the numbers. Is there any reason to suspect? Let's take the worst case scenario, worst case from my point of view that the coastal commission says no. That you cannot use the option four. You cannot use option four going forward. You, if you're in planning, you can't use it. If you're in building and safety, you can't use it. If you're in construction, you can't use it. Because after all, if a CDP is required, a CDP is required. And even if you get your house built and get your COO, you still don't have a CDP. And has the city given any consideration to what they're going to do to try to ameliate that potential difficulty?
We have not looked, we haven't gotten that far down the path. As I mentioned, the at this point, we're, we want to meet with staff to better understand their correspondence. And then, as I mentioned too, part of this is also to meet with their management staff so that this isn't coming from essentially a planner. This would be coming from a person of authority in the coastal commission.
Okay, but you know, it is my nature to assume that the worst is going to happen and and I guess my question is, does the city staff have a backup plan? Are you thinking about how you're going to deal with getting these projects moved forward? For example, one of the suggestions that I've heard is maybe there's a process by which these projects could be expeditiously transferred into coastal development permit applications, administrative coastal development permit application. Is there any work going forward on how the city might might deal with these projects? If if the coastal staff says, no, 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 you can't do that.
Essentially, what you've just said would be the path we'd have to take. We would make contact with the property owners. Present to them what would have to happen to see if they'd go through it. And then, yes, our fire rebuild team would then start working on CDP applications that would most, the majority of them. Because of what we're seeing, they'd be director level approvals that are reported to the planning commission. But that would be what we do.
Okay, one last question and I'll wrap it up. You say that you are not starting the clock on 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 giving notices for, for example, strikes close to home, a site plan review for a height over eighteen feet. What's the reason for stopping that process from going forward?
Essentially, it has to do with we don't, there is a cost associated with that and rather than you take the applicant's money on that or require them to put together notification labels that could be cited. That is one of the concerns and Trevor?
Yeah, Commissioner Jennings, you know, we don't have this agendized, so if you have further questions, maybe you can pick it up with Richard offline. This is, there's a meeting with the commission coming up and then there'll be a report and I don't coming forward for the city council where this can be more fulsomely vetted.
Well, I did try. I mean, I submitted a letter last week raising all these questions and got no response. So that's why I'm talking about it tonight. So that's it. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. And just a quick follow up on that, notwithstanding what Trevor just said, just to clarify. If those then have to be processed by a CDP with director level approval, that implies an additional CDP cost for all these people or what what is, what would the cost structure be and have you even thought about that yet?
The cost would be related to the scope of work. And some of these we'll have to look at to see if they are the original owner and the owner that was occupied at the time of the fire because that cost will have to look and see how that plays into the fee waiver resolution that was approved by the city council. And the reason why I say have to look into that is because essentially, no, the date to submit a project had passed. So I want to make certain that we have the ability to do that. If not, we'll return to council on that issue too.
Okay, thank you. I have more questions, but let's, John, I see your hand is up.
Yep. Off the subject. First, I wondered if we got an answer on whether Howdy's extension, a month ago, we asked for an answer on whether Howdy's extension was enclosed or unenclosed space. And that has something to do with one of the hearings we're having tonight. So I just wondered if we did get a the extension on whether those glass walls were considered walls.
Certainly. Jessica, could you pop up here again? Jessica did the research on that and actually, we were going to put together, since this is an item, we will put together a report. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the planning commission requested a formal item on this.
For that, I just wanted to make sure it was
Trevor, because I know it bears on the item of tonight. Can we go over it briefly or should we wait till that item comes up?
What do we, if you're going to address that there's concerns about the compliance of the overall property, if you want to just deal with that when it when the item's called. So that's a lot part of the record.
Is that acceptable to you, Commissioner Mazza? We can bring that up then. But yes, somebody did go out and look at it and we pulled the plans.
Okay, my second is a request. I request that we dedicate today's meeting to Harry Gesner. Pretty famous architect, probably the most famous one that actually lives in Malibu. He died last week. He's also very interesting life and surfer for over sixty years. So I hope we can dedicate the meeting to him.
I'll second that. John, more from you? No?
That's it.
Okay, I have several questions for, oh, I'm sorry. Dennis or Mark, are you? I didn't mean to jump in here.
Well, I don't, my questions were along the lines of the, you know, the option for deal and I I think Commissioner Jennings pretty much addressed what I was going to a lot, a lot more eloquently than I could have. So I'm going to pass.
All right, thanks. Dennis?
Hi, just heard Commissioner Jennings say he wrote a letter and said that he tried to talk to people and nobody answered him. I'm flabbergasted by that. I mean, he's a man, his family, been here for a lifetime. And if you wrote a letter and you guys didn't answer him, I don't know about that. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll say on one level, I agree with you and on another level, staff is pretty busy and pressed and you know, it's maybe they maybe they just need another day.
This is, this is another fire rebuild victim. Regardless of everything else, this is another fire rebuild victim. And now he writes a letter and he doesn't get an answer and someone that's given an awful lot to our city. I'm just not sure about that one.
Yeah, I hear you. A couple of questions for staff. I'm just to help me remind me about a few things. I was reminded of the Klein appeal down next to Trancus Creek and I just wondered I seem to have lost track of what was going on there at Coastal. Have they actually heard that yet or is that still in their queue?
I will look into that one for you and get you an answer. I've been more focused on
Yeah.
pushing them to get the lot in front of City Hall. But I want to say they might have actually heard that one, but I will, I'll have to look into that to confirm for you.
Yeah, I feel like they should have by now, but for some reason, I'm not remembering the decision, so.
Craig?
Yeah.
They did decide it. The Kleins agreed to accept signing an agreement to move the house back and to move it away from the creek and to raise it up and to, and they also, believe it or not, signed an agreement to tear it down if a wave ever hit it. So that was decided about two months ago.
So as regards the uprush issues, the Coastal's concerns held sway. They basically got their way.
Big time.
Yeah, okay. Second question, I sort of lost track of. There's a definition of enclosed space as being sixty percent and I think that related to the FAR. I wondered, I feel like it related to something else in residential code, but I did a quick look and didn't see it. It's sort of hard to search on a numeral and a percent sign and feel like you got the full answer. What code section am I thinking about that's the sixty percent is the definition of enclosed space? Is that just the FAR?
That is correct. It's in, Jessica, I believe the way it works offhand is when you look at our commercial development standards, they use FAR. And then from there, you go to look for the definition of FAR and it's in the definition section, correct?
I believe so. It's also kind of in a weird place under definitions where it's buildings comma enclosed under definitions. So it's kind of hard when you're searching for it.
Right, okay, that's, that's, I think, what I was looking at. Okay, next question. Is there any other interpretation of the word bulk other than volume? What does bulk mean in the code?
We don't have a formal interpretation of it. We, I want to say volume, but I believe it uses the word volume in there. I may be wrong. But in general, bulk is the size of it, which you're looking at, massing, just those descriptive terms.
And last question, the thirteen point four point six exemption for structures destroyed by natural disaster was that, that was put in place after the nineteen ninety-three fire or is this a a replacement version of what we had for the ninety-three fire that was done post Woolsey? Just is this, is this a new and improved post Woolsey version or was this already in place for the ninety-three fire?
I it has, it has no relation to the city. It's, that comes from, my understanding, is it comes from the Coastal Act. And it's independent of our replacement policies in past history.
Well, this is the exemptions for replacement include, there are several things in it, but one of them is the ten percent rule.
Correct.
That we've, that we've been working with.
Our, our city codes are actually, were stricter. The, the city codes did not have a ten percent addition in them. They were just a replacement structure. We've changed as a result of Woolsey, we changed our fire rebuild ordinance in the municipal code to be in alignment with the rebuild ordinance you see there that comes from the Coastal Act.
Boy, okay, I guess I'll take this offline with you because there's some real weird things about it and I don't need to take up our time here tonight, but I thought I'd get a more clear answer, but anyway. Yeah, no, your, your answer was clear, but the implications are suddenly not for me. Anyway.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead, Jeff.
I was just, on that subject. The exemption is not by the grace and favor of Peter Douglas. I mean, if they could have blocked it, they would have. It was imposed upon them by the legislature along with other things like Calvo exemptions and things like that which don't exist anymore. So I'm just backing up what Richard was saying. It's purely statutory language out of the coastal act.
Okay, well, that's helpful. Bit of a can of worms, anyway. All right, so I think we're done with commissioner comments. Richard, welcome back. What else do you have on your plate here?
Thank you. And Commissioner Jennings, I found your email and I will speak with the city attorney because I saw Thank you. And Commissioner Jennings, I found your email, and I will speak with the city attorney, because I saw. On that, I'll have a talk with him as I apologize out of the office last week. Today was a bit overwhelming, but. We'll go through that. And then the other item I wanted to bring up, in case anybody here was following it still. Is the high school project. That, as you may recall, commissioners was we were trying to get that in front of the city council. On the thirteenth, it was then continued. At this time, we're addressing one of the recommendations of this commission, and that has to do with traffic. And so that item is set at this point to go in front of the city council. On their first or excuse me, their first meeting, which would be, I want to say, the eleventh of July, if I'm not mistaken. For, yes, the eleventh of July, the city council would then hear the item related to the specific plan for the school. And also wanted to update the commission as well, that the school district. Has modified their drawings and their traffic study to eliminate the parking lot at the rear of the high school there at Clover Heights. Wanted to give you those two updates. And with that, I have no more updates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. And with that, we're on to. Four B, right? No, John.
Item. You have the consent item.
All right, well, consent calendar, you're right. Approval of three A, three, item three B, approval of minutes.
Yes, I want to pull that.
Okay.
Just for a comment on page. Two, bottom paragraph. Basically. The whole paragraph, I think, has. I couldn't understand half of it, but it does say that. Let's see here, that the. The Bell Lot. Has the director has constantly. The active appeal to the coastal commission is. Contacted them quarterly, asking them to put it on the calendar. And then it says around two thousand eleven or two thousand and twelve. So at least that part of it needs to be corrected. And. Somebody who understood who wrote it should read that paragraph. And see if they can make sense out of it. It just seems like a bunch of different. Sense they got put together.
Would it be helpful, Commissioner Mazza, perhaps if. The it read. The item of the the planning director stated that the Bell Lot is an active appeal with the coastal commission, or what should be coastal commission. And he has contacted them quarterly. Put on their calendar period and then new paragraph. And then we talk about around twenty eleven, twenty twelve. Pepperdine prepared an environmental impact report, because that is a a separate item there.
Okay. Is that it ran together? Okay.
And then. Another thing we could do, because then it goes into the the impound lot, which is another item. After the Pepperdine issue. And after that one sentence on the impound lot. We go into. An update. From an update regarding the tower. That's been a concern of everyone's about the fact that the LA County has put in a request to review our records. I believe because they're disagreeing with us on it. And then and then I follow up with an update about the palm tree that I believe was Chair Hill brought to our attention.
Yeah. I remember you talking about that. None of that's in here. A lot of that's not in here. So. My my only question would be to Trevor. Can we do this on the fly or?
If you have a number of of proposed changes, it might be better just to continue that. I mean, you can talk to staff about your concerns and then come back with a proposal revised, right? Sounds like it's not just a quick fix here.
Well, I'm not really concerned. I just couldn't figure out what it was talking about. If Richard fixes it. But I don't know what we don't want to fix it right now. There's three or four different things that need to be changed. So I got to move and be continued to the. Data uncertain. Is that right, Richard? Or you don't have to notice these, do you?
No, no, this is something we can make changes to that paragraph and bring it back to you.
Okay. Do I need to make a motion? Or we just do it?
Yeah, you can. You need to make a motion to. Do you want to put it to the next meeting, Richard? Or what do you want to? What's your preference?
Rebecca?
I mean, these are minor fixes. I could either do it right now, or we could. Move it to the next meeting, whichever you'd prefer. Basically. The the minutes are action minutes, so Director Molokhlas responses to all of the questions from the various commissioners were given in one group. So after he wasn't responding as each person asked, so his responses are. Addressing each of the questions previously mentioned, either in public comment or by the commissioners. But they can certainly be broken up into separate paragraphs based on topic if that makes them an easier read.
Yeah, I would rather I was just having brought back so we don't waste time tonight.
Sure.
It's a simple thing. I'll get.
And it seems like Rebecca, we can easily make the eighteenth.
We absolutely can.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Need a motion?
We need to, yeah.
Add a motion to bring back and data uncertain.
I'll second it for vote.
Do you want to move it to the eighteenth that Rebecca said we could do on the eighteen?
Eighteenth, I don't care what either way. They don't have to notice it, so it doesn't matter.
I'll second the motion, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Okay, can we say, can we make the motion to continue it to July eighteenth?
I accept it. Jeff accepts it. We're ready to go.
Okay, can we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mazza? Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we are on to item four B, continued public hearing regarding. Twenty three, four oh one Civic Center Way, Unit One C, Conditional Use Permit Amendment Number twenty one dash zero zero two. An application to allow the onsite sale and consumption of wine and beer. Alcohol beverage control license type forty one to patrons of a health and wellness center, Cure Spa, continued from June sixth, twenty twenty two. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Hill and members of the Planning Commission. The item you have before you tonight is for conditional use permit amendment. Number twenty one, zero, zero, two, for the project located at two, three, four, oh, one Civic Center Way, known as the Whole Foods Shopping Center. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the vicinity map and aerial photograph of the project site. The project site is outlined in red with surrounding commercial uses highlighted in black. Next slide, please. The project site is zone commercial visitor serving. And the tenant that we're discussing this evening is located in Building One, Unit One C. The tenant space is highlighted by a little red bubble. Next slide, please. Pictured here are some site photographs of the exterior of the space, including the outdoor seating service area. Next slide, please. Pictured here on the right is part of the indoor portion of the tenant space. And on the left side, another picture of the outdoor seating area. The outdoor seating area is to remain open to the public. And the project plans include signage that will note that that area is part of the outdoor seating area for the public. Additionally, as conditioned, this will not include any amplified live music as part of their specific plan. Next slide, please. The project description is to allow for conditional use permit amendment. To allow for onsite consumption of wine and beer as an ABC type forty one license. To an existing wellness center with restaurant service. The hours will be of operation will be from nine AM to nine PM daily. And the total service area is one thousand seven hundred and seventy six square feet. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the site plan. As indicated by the yellow star is the tenant space. And again, that's Unit One C in the center. Next slide, please. Pictured here is an overall floor plan for the for the tenant space, including some of the service rooms, the food service area in the patio, outdoor patio area. Next slide, please. In summary, staff recommends the adoption of resolution number twenty two, forty three. Approving Conditional Use Permit Amendment Number twenty one, zero, zero, two. The staff and the applicant team are available for any questions.
And Jessica, I think this would be a good time, too. We could kind of hit back on Commissioner Mazza's question. So you you did go out. If I recall correctly, and you compared. The. The Plexiglas or glass, whichever that is, against glass at Howdy's, and you found it to be per the plans, correct?
Correct.
All right, and the issue that we did find out there, Commissioner Mazza. Was that there was a canopy. Placed over the trellis. And we are and we are in the process of handling that issue with the property owner, because based on. The plans that Jessica looked at that were approved for the glass. They show an open trellis. And also the photographs at the time of inspection. When the the planner went out to complete the planning inspection for the shopping center, they too show that as a open area. So we are addressing that issue with the landlord. To resolve it. And so that is something, and I know we were looking at Trevor, did was the compliance agreement, compliance agreement signed? Where are we with that?
There's a there's a draft that's been circulated and. Yeah, but it has not been signed at this point in time. So. There've been representations made that that will be signed, but it has not happened at this point in time. So that will if that's signed, that will then ensure that the property is brought into compliance.
Just as a question on if if for some reason they decide, yeah, no, we're not going to sign that. Does that then that space? Would be considered interior space at that point, or or? What's the, you know?
They are going to need to address the covering some. Through a permitting process. If that were to become. Enclosed space, it would require. A written approval. It it wouldn't just by default become an enclosed space. And when I say written approval, I I. I'm using that to say that somehow it either be a CDP or ministerial or something. But it would be documented. It it, you know, we would look to see that the proper processing mechanism. But at this time. As mentioned by Jessica, based on, and also by me, based on what we found out in the field, we found a covering that. You you from our records was placed without the benefit of permit. And so that's something they. They need to address through the application process or remove it.
So just to clarify, so you're saying they can cure this, but if they didn't, the stakes are that they would be in excess of their allotted FAR.
They would, if they don't fix this, we essentially have a zoning zoning ordinance violation.
Yeah.
And that is what we are.
It'll have to be brought into compliance, so either through a compliance agreement or otherwise through other mechanisms of finding or criminal action.
Okay, John?
So a compliance agreement. If it wasn't, it was. You could not sign a compliance agreement saying you can have a roof.
The the compliance agreement just requires that the that that it be cured. One way or the other, other through removal or through an application process on a set period of time. I don't go too far into this. Since we don't have a signed agreement in place, and you know, it's like the code enforcement matter. But that that's the essence of the compliance agreement ensures that it will be brought into compliance in a certain period of time, whereas consequences attached to it.
Okay, the only reason I this was brought up is because. Of this other item we're hearing tonight, but you may want to look at the city owned restaurant. And look at the roof on that one. Okay, a second question on this.
Hang on, hang on, John, before we get into this, we should take disclosures.
Yeah, and and to be fair, the the agreement was only circulated to them today. This this happened very quickly. I know this only came up since the last meeting, so.
And one last question on that, Jessica. The ten foot walls didn't. Weren't any problem. It was the the roof that was the problem. So other people could put up ten foot walls. And. As long as they were glass. You didn't consider. A violation. Is that right?
The glass screen was approved under an over the counter application, and the center provided calculations that it met that requirement to be forty percent open. Because the wall does not go, or excuse me, the glass screen does not go all the way to the roof, they demonstrated, and with the entry that it's still forty percent. Open. Where we found the issue like we were discussing is that with the covered roof, then that takes it over. Being or is not is no longer forty percent open with the coverage of the roof. But the glass portion was approved under the over the counter and was compliant.
Okay, so it does. So we're still under the same restrictions as the. Original CDP on the whole center.
Yes.
Okay.
Disclosures, John?
Been there. I I do not normally shop at that center, but I've been through it many times.
Jeff? Dennis? Mark? None. Yeah, you're muted, but I heard I saw the none and none for me, too. Okay, so we've had the staff report disclosures. Any other quick questions of staff before we go to public hearing? None, okay. In in that case, let's open it for I we have the applicant here, I believe, right?
They do. We'll begin with Marnie Randall. And. Followed by Marnie, still with the applicant team, will be Michael McCauley.
Okay, Marnie and Michael, if you can hear me, you collectively have fifteen minutes. I know you know how this goes. And you can reserve any portion of that for rebuttal. Rebecca, do we have any public speakers lined up?
We do actually now have. Two other public speakers in the meeting in opposition to the item.
Okay, so Marnie and Michael, you if if you want to reserve for rebuttal, you do have a couple of people who'll be speaking after you. And with that, welcome.
Hello, am I unmuted?
You are. Hi.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, Chair Hill and Commissioners. And I'd like to thank staff for their work on this project. And Michael McCauley, who's one of the partners in the business, is here to answer any questions you have. This Cure Spa has been operating in Malibu for about twelve years, and this is a new location to them. And they are adding a small food service element to their business. And would like to provide wine and beer for their clientele. So if you have any questions about the business, the food preparation area would be quite small, quite a small portion of the actual space. And it is an adjunct to their other services. So if you have any questions of us, we're happy to answer those. And we are available for questions and for rebuttal. So and if you have any specific questions of Mr. McCauley on how the business will be operated, he's here to answer those for you. So with that, I'd like to turn this back over to you.
All right, thank you very much, Marnie. You've got thirteen minutes, forty five seconds left. Public. First speaker, please.
Our first speaker will be Ryan Embry, followed by Joe Drummond.
Okay, Ryan, welcome back.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Okay, I'm not sure what alcohol cures exactly. I think it's totally unnecessary. I'm concerned that the property owner in general is maybe pressuring its tenants to get approvals for alcohol sales. All over the place in the shopping center that helps maximize. You know. Patronage or future. Tenants in the same location by establishing a tradition of alcohol sales. At a particular tenant location. It also would be an ongoing evaluation. It also would be an ongoing evaluation burden on the city's part to enforce the requirement that alcohol sales be less, I guess, than half of the dollar sales of the food quotient of the business. And from what was just described as a tiny kitchen, as an adjunct food service operation, and yet forty-eight hundred square feet of outdoor seating area seems completely disproportionate. And contrary to what was stated in the staff report, that the spa's ratio of four thousand square feet of interior to forty-eight hundred square feet of exterior is somehow a good ratio. One problem is that you probably can't cure, no pun intended, I'm sorry, the the notion that a letter of public convenience or necessity is required and, and actually applicable. It just doesn't make sense. What are they curing there anyway? Is this, you're supposed to kind of numb the body before they, you know, poke you in the forehead? Is this, is this the botox place or not? Maybe not, maybe I'm just conflating the, the owner's involvement, maybe hands in a lot of different businesses around town and in other cities, but the report says the alcohol sales will be secondary to food service. And just look at the, the size of the kitchen and the operation. I don't think that's possible, and it, it doesn't look correct. It's not necessary. And this would put alcohol sales in competition with the other businesses that have already received the approvals. And this would put alcohol sales at every entrance to that shopping center, every vehicle entrance. It just doesn't look like a good idea, it's not necessary. And anybody who's a recovering alcoholic should not be exposed to environment of this type of, maybe it's champagne or whatever. But it, there just ought to be a safe place for that not to occur, so.
Thank you, Mr. Embry, we are at time.
Thank you, Ryan. Joe?
Hi there. So I oppose increasing the concentration of alcohol sales in the park at Cross Creek Shopping Center. This is supposed to be a place for families to enjoy, and I don't see any good or logical reason why a health and wellness spa needs to serve and charge for alcohol, a regulated substance. The juice and smoothie bar is most preferred. I've never been to a spa that didn't offer healthy drink and food options other than possibly a glass of complimentary champagne after a massage, but nothing more than this. It is setting a bad precedent that alcohol sales be prevalent in the area, and it's not a welcome change to the area. More opportunities for bad behavior, drunk driving, et cetera. This item should be continued until the Howdy's application in the shopping center interpretation is resolved. It's also will be competition for Howdy's as well, thanks.
All right, thank you, Joe. Do we have any other hands up since then, any public speakers?
If there's anyone else present in the meeting who wishes to speak on this item, please use the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
And if not.
Seeing none. Would the applicant team care to respond to public comment?
Marnie or Michael?
Yes, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. I would like to point out that this is a CUPA. This entire space was approved for alcohol service for the Cafe de Moray operation, which was unable to complete their tenant improvements due to the pandemic and various other conditions. It is pretty common these days for various health and beauty operations to offer champagne and snacks to their customers. As you know, the whole business of retail and other business operations is evolving. And many businesses have multifaceted operations. This is not going to be primarily a restaurant, but they will have a small food service space that will allow them to prepare the types of food that would be necessary for serving beer and wine. We don't consider this a primarily alcohol service operation. And the, the ABC will require and approve the letter of public convenience prepared by the owner. This is an, this is a facet of the ABC's operation and their licensing.
Okay. If we have other questions, we, we will get back to you, I imagine we may. Okay, we'll take this out of the, the, the public hearing and bring it back to the commission table. I'm inclined to want to talk about the status of it. So-called restaurant status is sort of a threshold issue, but Jeff, you, you have a.
Well, I would just like to hear from the applicant, I would like to have a better picture of how his services are all going to go together, how this is. What's his vision here?
Yeah, and I would add to that, just to clarify, they characterize how much of the, the revenue are they expecting from the health versus the food versus the alcohol?
Yes, hi, it's Michael McCauley, I'm here.
Hi, Michael, welcome.
Hi there, thank you. So my name, my name's Michael McCauley. I've been a resident of Malibu for almost thirty years. I've owned businesses here that service the community for all things health and beauty. I'm excited to open up this new location to continue servicing the community. We've hired Marnie to help us with all this, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. I think there was a question regarding, let's see, what was it? Did you have a question regarding just my general services, how they, how they kind of, how, how they work there?
Yeah, Jeff wants to know how they all fit together, and I said, maybe you could be more specific and talk about the, the relative portions of health to food to alcohol, and just what, what the structure looks like.
Yeah, Jeff, this, we're going to be a day spa, it's, it's a, you know, we'll be doing haircuts. We'll also have wellness products on the shelf. There are, there are a big move towards wearable devices. So we are, we doing a lot of retail for those devices. As far as the services, you know, we do have three, three rooms there. They will be for haircuts, a facial, and that's really about it. We can do a little bit of IV drips, botox, I will have a, you know, a nurse there, a med spa nurse that can do those type of services. Typically, when you're at a, a day spa wellness center, you do like to have a snack, a glass of champagne or a glass of wine to, to, you know, to have the, you know, the whole experience. There's, there's a couple of places out there, one I'd like to refer to as the Dry Bar. They, all they do is haircuts and blowouts, and they, they serve wine and, wine and beer there. Fred Segal is another example, I know in town, I see them, I know they are just selling alcohol there. So it's, it's just part of the whole experience. So we are a luxury wellness experience for the community.
Could I ask you a little bit? I read the staff report back when this item was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, and I'm, I'm trying, I can't find the spot, I was looking at it, but I I'm trying to figure out the type of food, you're not really going to have a kitchen, are you? You're going to be basically serving foods that is prepackaged and brought in? You're not going to have a chef there, right?
No, and it's not going to be prepackaged, this is food that's going to be prepared off-site. And it'll be brought in once, twice a day, and then warmed up. I'll have, you know, a convection oven, I'll have microwave or even a toaster oven to warm up a couple of things.
Okay.
You know, panini press to do my sandwiches, salads we prepared on site, but all the ingredients will be brought in, you know, fresh daily.
All right, okay, okay.
Would, would the, would the food service and/or the alcohol be open to the public to just come in and get food apart from having some sort of health or beauty treatment?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, there's no need to get any services. You can always come in and have a, you know, drink or food there.
John?
Yeah, um, I looked, I should have disclosed, I looked at your website, and it states there's a thousand dollar a month membership fee. Is that for everywhere but the, the kitchen?
No, that's a, that's a, John, that's, that's a different business that we have. You're looking at, that's part of the business, we do have a concierge membership for some of our clients, but that is a different business.
Okay, and.
This is fully open to the public.
We're, we're asked to approve a hundred and sixty-five square foot restaurant. And that leaves a hundred and nine square feet for the whole shopping center that has not been taken up, according to their CUP. What other areas of the building are you going to serve food and liquor in?
May I?
Go ahead, Marnie.
They're going to serve outside on the patio. The hundred and sixty-five square feet includes the two restrooms that would be required for ABC licensing, but they are also being provided for the spa patrons.
Does it not include?
Pardon me?
Your kitchen is going to include two restaurants, I mean, two.
Two restrooms and the service area.
And I'm talking about the kitchen, the area.
Two restrooms and the food preparation area, yes.
And a hundred and sixty-five square feet.
Correct.
And these are going to be ADA compliant?
The restaurants are.
I don't think you could do that.
The kitchen also, as well.
Well, you showed me a plan with a hundred and sixty-five square feet.
There is a plan in the staff report.
Okay.
Jessica, do you have that handy to put on screen?
Yeah, I want ADA compliant bathroom twice in a hundred and sixty-five square feet.
Let me send it to our tech folks, and then I can get it pulled up, just a moment.
My real question is the rest of your building, you've got a barber shop and some other stuff.
They've got treatment rooms and a retail area, you need to look at the plan.
Can you eat there?
No, you may not, you can't eat in a treatment room or in the retail area.
How about the barber shop? Can you drink and, drink or eat in either one of those?
The barber shop would, you mean where you get a haircut? No, you can't eat or drink in the treatment rooms. You can eat or drink outside.
So nobody in the building, because it says in the staff report, servicing your customers at the spa, none of the people in the spa may have a drink or eat.
They can take it outside and eat and drink.
So there, if there's.
There's really no seating in the space for eating and drinking.
No, but you could be sitting on a barber chair drinking a drink or getting your botox and have a drink.
Well, no.
So, so you are.
Spill a little bit.
You're not going to serve any alcohol or food or allow it to be used in any portion of the building other than the hundred and sixty-five square foot kitchen and bathroom.
Michael?
Yeah, no, we're not going to serve any food inside the, the treatment rooms, that's not going to happen, or drinks.
I'm not saying the treatment rooms, any portion, how about, how about the.
There's a, you know, with that customer, I'm looking at the plans right now, you pulled up that customer area, I mean, there'll be some couches there, there, there's a waiting room there, they could have a glass of champagne while they wait for a service. But not in the room. They can sit in that customer area, there's, you know, in the lobby.
Okay, did you count that on a hundred and sixty-five square feet?
This is a retail area. And no, we did not count it because there's no place to sit.
And actually, the plans say that in that area, food and, and drink consumption not permitted.
Okay, so you've got a seventeen by seven. Now, the, here's a question for both Jessica and the representative, I guess we don't have a representative at the shopping center. But the, the food and drink consumption area in the CDP is marked open space. Okay? Can you have a restaurant in open space?
Well, my understanding, similar to the Howdy's approval, is that's also outdoor space that's open to the public, as this will be. I'll find on the page of the staff report, there's signage that says anybody in the public could come and sit in this area.
Okay.
And maybe Marnie can elaborate a little bit more.
Let me ask you a little question before we get to that.
Sure.
We counted Howdy's open space as service area. We counted it against the restaurant. In this case, it doesn't appear we're counting it in the restaurant, because that, that food and drink consumption open area out there is a lot bigger than a hundred and nine square feet. So why did we count it for Howdy's and not count it here?
I believe we counted it under both, so let me, let me double check the calculation one moment.
Well, you couldn't have counted it here, because you only have a hundred and sixty-five feet.
Let me go ahead and just double check and look at that in one moment.
Well, that's about twenty by nineteen, the outside.
Oh, no, it's twenty by twenty-nine.
Yeah.
But I just want to remind you, that's, that's supposed to be, there's only a hundred and nine square feet left under their, their limit, they only get four thousand square feet. So they've used, they used a hundred and sixty-five, which took them up to.
So I believe, I believe the total for the center is taken up to three thousand seven hundred and twenty-six square feet, and that's inclusive of the indoor space for Howdy's, believe three, for unit three A and three B.
And none of the outdoor space.
I do not believe so, the outdoor seating separate, under all the outdoor seating calculation. And the outdoor seating for Howdy's was seven hundred and seventy-one.
And that, right?
That counted towards the total outdoor seating area of four thousand eight hundred square feet. Not the indoor service, food service area.
And at that time, we had how much leftover for outdoor seating? Really, we had already used it all, correct? Four thousand.
Yeah.
Jessica, I know Marnie has her hand raised on this, but these are, if I recall correctly, the outdoor seating areas that were contemplated under the specific plan in CDP, they were not expanded.
Correct.
They were not, they were not service area for a restaurant. In this case, you could take every store in the center, using this scenario, every single store, and say, well, let's put a little corner over here, a hundred and sixty-five square feet, and they can service alcohol outside. We didn't let Howdy's do that. So you could, you, and, and they're, the way we measure restaurants is service area. So all of a sudden, we're adding twenty-seven times twenty or twenty-nine times twenty in space.
I'd be happy to pull up, let me send this to our IT folks, I think this will help clear it up, the plan that shows all the outdoor seating area for the center as well as the service area. Just give me a moment, I'll get that pulled up for us.
And also like you to pull up the CDP map that shows where people are supposed to do this.
While they're doing that, Jeff, you want, you have your hand up?
If I could. So that the the limitation, the condition that's shown on page eight of thirteen, that number sixteen, non-alcohol sales, food and non-alcoholic beverages shall total a minimum of fifty percent of annual grocery receipts, that's a condition that's imposed by this type of license by the ABC, is that not right?
That is correct, that's a requirement of the ABC.
Let me add, excuse me, so what I'm, I'm struggling with is the, the liquor sales have to be less than fifty percent of the, of the amount charged for the little snacks, and not for the whole operation of the spa. And not for the whole operation of the spa, so you don't, you don't count the haircut and the facial and all the rest of that stuff. And say that's counted in, it has, it only relates to food and drink, is that correct? Or could they say, well, uh, our, our income from liquor is, is one twentieth of what we bring in from the facials and haircuts and all the rest of that stuff?
It would need to come from the food service. I'm actually looking for the specific language of it right now, but it would be of the food service, so. I, I know that on the application, uh, Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was like, I think it was more than just snacks, it was sandwiches. And the idea was, was an actual meal that anybody in the center, not just the, the folks going there for services. Uh, could, uh, enjoy, for lack of a better term.
Yes, that's correct. Um, and I, I do believe Marnie could probably elaborate a little bit more on the menu. I know she had sent me something, I think it was maybe yesterday regarding, uh, updated menu.
Does anyone need to know the menu? I don't, I don't necessarily.
Just have to believe, I believe that, that you can sell. You're gonna charge less for the sandwich than the, than the drink, or more.
Uh, Jessica was looking, uh, you got, okay, you got the thing up already.
Yeah, but while you have it up there, you can see. Where the Cure Spa food service area is, at a hundred and sixty-five square feet. And then you've got the black area next to it. Is the service area. Now, my question would be, is it truly a service area, or is it a place to see? Will a waiter come out and hand you your sandwich, or hand you your drink? Will it be bust? Is it a restaurant? If it's a restaurant, you must count. The service area. And that takes you way, way, way over the amount allowed for the shopping center. It's like when we did the shopping center next door, we set an outside limit. Of how much service area could be outside of the building. Six thousand square feet, as I remember, for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand square foot building. That's required. So every building along here, four G, four F, four E, four D, four A. Twenty, two D, uh, you know, there's probably ten of them, twelve of them, each could put a little corner in their, in their, uh, building. And start selling, uh, booze and food out the window. Uh. That's. That's nuts. I don't know how else to describe it. We, we did allow. In my opinion, I voted against it, uh, take out for, for these, uh, wine bars, but we limited. Strictly on what they could do and when they could do it. But in this case, we're taking a, a shopping center. And if you look at the map of the shopping center, I looked it up this afternoon, uh, under their CDP. That area is open space. I don't consider a restaurant open space. When you have busboys and, and, and et cetera, et cetera, so. And by the way, somebody brought this up, but directly next to the Cure Spa service area is the, is the children's playground. Okay, the highly touted children's playground. With all that stuff in it, uh. But again. You put a limit on a shopping center, you have to follow it. And if we consider that, that whole service area, and I don't have my calculator here, but, uh. It's big, is a hundred and nine square feet, which is all this, this shopping center is allowed to have. Above what is in, is in this building, under a hundred and sixty-five square feet.
Uh, John, thank you, let me, let me just remind the applicants that we'll call on them when we have questions for them. I, I have a concern that is different, but that interacts with John's concern about what is, how much of it is the restaurant. Which is that, as I see this, it's, it's primarily a health and wellness facility. Uh, they're selling the cure products, they're performing the medical consultations, IV drips, botox, et cetera. Um. The LIP has a definition of restaurant, which starts out, restaurant, a standalone facility. That sells prepared food and drinks for consumption, including lunch counters, refreshment stands, there's also a definition for, separate definition for restaurant. Carryout, which this might be closer to, but that begins with any restaurant that blah, 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 blah. So, we basically have this pretty black letter definition here, that it's a standalone facility. And yet, we're talking about integrating those functions within something that's primarily a health and wellness facility. So, I, I have a, I have a problem from, from, from that standpoint, that it, it really isn't, I mean, I sort of feel like. Well, I'll, I'll leave it there for the moment, and then, um, other commissioners, do you have comments on that or other separate issues?
Well.
Mark, go ahead, Mark.
But, but my, uh, question would be. Does, uh, by issuing this license type forty-one. Uh, i- i- if, if this were to be issued in this location, does that, uh, prevent another. License type forty-one from being issued in the center somewhere else? You know, in other words. You know, if there was a, uh, you know, a real restaurant that wanted to go in and serve beer and wine, are we maxing out? At some point, do we max out on what, uh, what can be issued?
That's for Jessica or Trevor, I would say.
There's not a, a maximum amount for the center, so any new tenant, if there was a new restaurant, would have to come in with a new application. Um, for a new, you know, liquor license type, and would be analyzed at that time. But there's not, by issuing this license, not maximizing the amount of liquor license issued for the center.
So theoretically, every, you know, you, every business in there could be a restaurant that serves beer and wine.
Well, there's a certain amount of square footage allotted for the center for restaurant use. Um, so they would have to be, so if another restaurant left and a new tenant came in, as long as they were compliant with the amount of square footage. They would be able to operate as a restaurant.
Dennis?
I was just gonna say, I, I. I believe these guys are in norms, maybe they're still over there, uh, Mr. Haney's, uh, facility, um. I'm just thinking that another person trying to start or get, keep things going here in Malibu. Um, and it's hard, it's hard to, uh. Hard to do that here, and, and, you know, take a, take a chance and run a business, so, um, I, I'm. I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking of somebody just trying to do that. I also wanna make a comment to Ryan. So, when he's talking about a recovering alcoholic, and with my twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-two days of sobriety, which is thirty-four years, eight months and four days. Um, I'm pretty sure, Ryan, that nobody, it would, uh, that's recovering. Is going to have so much of a problem when they drive in and realize that there's nothing but alcohol in the whole shopping center. So I'm not sure where you come up with these things, but that's. I've listened to you for a long time, that's a real Dan there, so, um, anyway, other than that, that's it for me.
Ryan, we don't need to go down that road, sorry, um, John?
Yeah, I, I wanna point out something that's changed in the last twelve months. Um. The city of Malibu sets the requirements for. A bar. Not the ABC. The ABC sets the maximum use of a license. And all of a sudden, the last few ones we've heard, it's, oh, if I've got a forty-seven license, I can do this. No, that's not how it works. The city reviews the use, sets their limits. This is, this has always been done in Malibu. Sets their limits, saying you gotta close this time, you gotta open this time, you gotta have a bouncer, whatever. And then they sign. A paper to the ABC, here's our rules, you can, you can give them a license. But it's our rules, it's not if you get a forty-seven, you can do everything possible on a forty-seven, or a forty-two, or whatever they are. That's the way it works. And I've owned three bars, I've never run them, but I've had to get the license. That's the way it works. And so we are. All of a sudden, the last two we've heard were, oh, they got a forty-seven. They, they get to do this. And we, we have to consider that when we do these things, because these are in different places, this is not the doom room. Okay, this is shopping center. Um. Neither is, uh, uh, what you call it, Fred Siegel, as far as I'm concerned, but, um, that's something we. We also need to consider that. We need to follow the CDP, which allocated spaces in the center. And they did it for a very good reason, uh, there was a lot of. Give and take on, and we even had an election over this center, um. Give and take on what they could do. And a lot of give and not a whole lot of take, but the take was limiting these spaces. And if, if we say you can have a hundred and sixty-five square foot. Restaurant. You'd be a fool not to have one in every one of these buildings. Um, you can sell a lot of ice cream cones and, uh. Margaritas out the window, you can, you can become New Orleans. And that's one thing we have to look at, and that's why the city council spent years getting this thing right. Or as close as they could. Uh. It's an important thing. And, and you look at these numbers, and that service area, if somebody's gonna serve you out there, it's not somebody. Buying a hamburger and walking around and finding a place to sit. And the catch twenty-two on that is. It, you, it says right in our staff report and the conditions, you can't serve booze unless it's a service area. Well, what is it? It says right in there, you can't, you can't just go take this drink and go sit in front of Whole Foods. It must be the service area, it must be limited. So, we are defining a restaurant here with a large service area. And. It's one or the other, uh, but they don't have room for that in their CDP, so the CDP is a very important thing here.
Okay, John, I think your point's well ma- made, uh, Dennis, your hand is up.
Sorry, 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 got it.
Uh, Jeff, you've got something.
Yeah, we. When we allowed the Fred Siegel wine tasting thing to go in, we didn't say, okay, Brad, you're in our restaurant. Right? We allowed it as an adjunct to the. Whatever it is they do there, clothing, I guess. Um, so, I, I don't think that's necessary for us to say, okay, you're either a restaurant or. Or what I'm troubled by is, is how you're gonna make this work, because. If the member of the public wants to come in and. Well, it, I suppose in theory, that's not our problem. Uh, the requirement is that the revenue from beer and wine has to be less than fifty percent of the revenue from food. Um. I, I don't see that happening, but it's not my, it's, it's their problem to make it work, not mine, um. Well, I, I, I don't know, I, I just, I, I'm just, I'm less, I'm less persuaded by the categories idea, that it's either have to be one thing or the other.
Well, a couple of words on that, I, I think, um, Fred Siegel's distinguishable in that they were mainly. There to sell, and it was an incidental taste with maybe a little cracker on the side, whereas here, I think they're talking about a little bit more of a menu. Um, also. If. They, the part of their picture leaned on the notion that the, the prior tenant had an alcohol approval, but that, that I think is. Kind of undermined by their representation that the space has since been improved to provide the facilities needed for the medical treatments. Spa and the skin and healthcare related products. Um, so the basic space has changed, and so by that analogy, I would say, you know, if I converted an old gas station into an antique store. I wouldn't expect to still be selling gasoline there. John?
Yeah, and, and in fact, the old tenant never even built a, a restaurant, it never really occupied the building at all. Um. The, and I wanna point out, in, in these wine tasting bars, we put strict restrictions on it, it had to be prepackaged, and I forgot what it was, but. Basically pretzels.
Yeah.
No food prep. Okay, none. And, uh, that same true with Strange Vineyards is also true, um. Which we didn't even get to see, um.
There, there was no pretense that it was even a restaurant.
Right, so. Well, the thing that concerns me most is this idea that people can open up restaurants. And not be restricted by service area. And you're seeing what's, now this is temporary, but you're seeing what's going on. In the, uh, various shopping centers, especially the village, when they said, okay, you can move your restaurant out into the parking lot. All of a sudden, some very tiny restaurants got very huge. Um. The, uh, the thing that sells the lobster rolls. The, uh, service area is probably twenty times what the restaurant was. And this is what happens when you don't have any control over it, uh, the other thing. Um. Boy, I just had a, a blank, uh. This is. A very, uh. Well, this is open space, okay? You know, when you can turn, contain, can change the character of open space to a restaurant. You're, if there's a CDP requirement of forty percent, period. Um. It got around, uh, the, the landscaping by. Making a bigger lot than actually existed, but, uh. Uh, they didn't change the open space requirement. Um, I also, I, I questioned for Jessica is, when you listed the parking spaces. You listed, uh, the horse hookup and the, uh, uh, golf cart. And, uh, a couple other things, and, and those weren't counted in the original two twenty. Um. I do not believe. So, I, I don't know what's going on there, but. Everybody in town would have a hitching post with ten, ten little rings on it, and get ten more parking spaces. But that's, that's not the big problem here, um.
John, help me out here, I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to understand your argument. I don't always do that, but I'm trying this time to understand your. The food service area is that outdoor area, correct? And that's called in the plans and in the staff report, the service area?
No, it's not counted. It's called open, uh, it's called open seating or something. Now, when you read the staff report. It, it's a little confusing, because it says the restaurant's a hundred and sixty-five square feet. It also says you can't serve. Booze outside of this service area. Well, you can't serve booze in the hundred and sixty-five square feet. You wouldn't get enough people in there, especially when you have two bathrooms. So, it's either service area, or it's, or it's open seating. But it's not both. Okay, that's the problem. And then Craig brought up a, a good point. Well, why, why don't you count? How is this an ancillary use to a Cure Spa when you can't drink in the Cure Spa? Or you can't eat in the Cure Spa? So it's an outside. It's an outside restaurant, it's like if somebody opened a Tasty Freeze and opened the door. Except they had people bring you your Tasty Freeze, along with your Scotch and soda. Um, and if Jessica could put up that, that.
So, John, the.
Area, you'll see it this.
Let me, let me try to get, so you're saying that because the outside area, that customer outdoor seating area. Should be counted as service area, and if it is, it reduces the available. Restaurant service area for the rest of the shopping center to.
Well, there's an outside limit on that, there's four thousand square feet, I believe.
Right, but it, it doesn't, if you count that as, if you count that as service area. The, the outside limit for the shopping center of, as a whole is not exceeded, correct?
Oh, massively exceeded.
What? Sorry.
Massively exceeded, we have a, after you count the kitchen, there's a hundred and nine square feet left on that four thousand limit.
And that outside area is five hundred and eighty.
Yeah, but there's a hundred and nine allowed. Because of the CDP. I can give you the numbers here.
That, that, that's, excuse me. That, that, that's, excuse me, Mark, doesn't the plan say three?
Well, it's twenty-nine by twenty, it looks like.
The, the. It says on the plans, it says three hundred and fifty-one square feet.
On the plan, it's stamped eight sixty-one. So I think Mark is, Mark, you did your own math and they called it eight sixty-one, so you were off a little bit.
Well, a lot. I, I mean, I just went by the dimensions. It's twenty, twenty long by twenty-one or twenty-nine wide.
Yeah.
Okay, so Jessica, explain to me why the, the plan says. Or Marnie or somebody, explain why it's a very small print, but it says three.
Uh, Jeff, let me give you some quick number here. When we went into this project after they counted Howdy's. The available square footage in the shopping center. Was, uh, the used square footage in the shopping center was thirty-seven hundred and twenty-six square feet. And all the exterior square footage, uh, exterior outdoor seating is taken. Now that you add to that a hundred and sixty-five. And that gives you thirty-eight ninety-one square feet that is taken. That leaves you a hundred and nine square feet for the whole shopping center.
Right.
Sure, for restaurants and that, that, that. Service area is, what, what did, uh? Mark say five hundred and something?
Well, five, five eighty, the. Table two says eight hundred and eighty-one square feet. So I, I don't know what, you know, who's right, but.
You're off by at least four hundred. Let's make it real simple. Which is.
Yeah.
You're saying more than the CDP allows that shopping center to have.
Okay, but, but. Hear me out. Your argument is that. That should be counted as service area. And that's bad because it doesn't leave much service area for the rest of the shopping center.
No, it takes up four hundred more square feet than the shopping center is allowed.
Okay, alright.
Now, uh, yeah, so that's. That's just like a scene of.
Then, then let me ask Jessica. What is the response to that? If, if the, the outdoor seating area would, would, would. Exceed the service area allowed by the CDP for the shopping center?
My understanding is that the outdoor service area is common seating area. So it wouldn't be considered necessarily a service area because anyone could technically take their food and come sit in that area.
Okay, so we did that, did the same thing at Howdy's, didn't we?
Correct, yes.
And I think it should also be noted too, the application does not indicate. When we reviewed this, there was no indication. Of a, uh, waitstaff. In other words, uh, that is why we. Uh, applied the definition, when we reviewed this, we found that it matched the definition of a carryout restaurant. Uh, because our understanding of the operation is that you go to a counter. They have the prepackaged meals there. You pick what it is you want to eat and then. If you choose to, you could take it out to that patio. Uh, or you could, or you can leave. Now, if somebody chooses to buy a glass of wine or champagne with their meal. Then they are restricted to that patio area. They wouldn't be able to carry that glass through the shopping center.
Yeah, but Richard.
Hang on, John, John, hang on.
I want to, I want to point this out. Our conditions on this project say. They may not eat in that area or drink in that area unless it's a service area. That keeps them from going outside of it. It's right in our conditions.
Okay, let me, for, this is for Richard or Jessica. If they take their food out there, they sit down, they have their drink, they finish their meal. They're gonna get up and walk away. Who comes out and cleans that up? There's a busboy, somebody with some sort of service function is, is. Patrolling those tables presumably.
Jessica.
I think my understanding was that they're responsible, you know, the person's responsible to throw away whatever their food.
Yeah, there was no mention of, of, I mentioned a waitstaff or I guess that, a bus staff. I'm not very familiar with restaurant terms, but. Uh, it, it was. Not planned that you would be having any sort of. Associate of the business out there. Uh, my guess is, there will probably be somebody picking up after everybody as some sort of, uh, janitorial staff.
Well, yeah, I mean, I figure we probably all recognize that some people clean up their own stuff when they get food and some people just leave it there and. Uh, uh, this gets back to my, my point, looking at the code. It seems like a really strong threshold thing that. A restaurant must be standalone. And we're, we're, we've got it mingled now with this other use and it just, just doesn't seem like this is in any, like, well. Let me ask the question. How would this restaurant be defined as standalone? Uh, by what rationale is it?
This is, you're, you are correct, Chair. It's not a standalone restaurant. It's an. It's part of an operation. Much like, uh. You know, a hotel, whatever restaurant in it or, um.
Or like maybe the Racket Club has a restaurant within.
Restaurant associated with it or the food service that's associated with a carryout food service associated out with Whole Foods.
Well, Richard, uh.
But, but here, it's not standalone because it's intermingling with the public usage of that space. And obviously it's also in a health facility, but.
Well, it's not, and it also is not, it does not service any portion of the health facility. As Marnie pointed out, or the. Owner pointed out. You cannot eat or drink in the health facility. So it's not an integrated part of the health.
Can I ask if, if there are, uh, uh, any commissioners who have questions outstanding still or are, are, are on the line about this in any way? I mean, I sort of feel like maybe we're getting close to a, a motion somewhere.
If nobody does, I just want to read you the conditions in here. Okay? Operations condition number eight. Alcoholic service, the secondary, the meal service and food service shall be available for purchase in those areas where alcohol is served. Okay? Which means the way it's been described here, only in that kitchen. Okay? No portion of the restaurant service area may serve. As a separate bar or, or only establishment where food is not available. Okay? The, the tenant shall maintain the available kitchen facilities and operate and maintain the premises. As a bona fide. Uh, eating place, full service shall be provided during all hours of operation and establishment. And you're saying there's no service. Okay? And then. No offsite sale of alcohol is permitted. Alcohol only may be served within the approved service area. Not the kitchen. So. There's no question it's a service area. Or we have to change all these restrictions. If it isn't a service area, it's no different than anywhere else in the shopping center. How, how, you can walk around with your drink anywhere else. It just isn't. And. We put it in writing. It's, it's, uh, operations condition number eight, nine and ten. There's others too like this, but those are very specific.
Okay, Jeff, you had here.
The one that's, that's a little. It says that, um. The sale of alcoholic beverages but shall be limited to restaurant patrons only. Food must be purchased with alcohol sale. So I find this a little difficult. You have somebody in there, they're having a, a spa day. They'd like to have a glass of champagne. No, I'm sorry. You gotta have a hot dog with your champagne. Just doesn't.
And you have to eat it outside.
And you have to eat it outside. I don't know. It's troubling. Um.
And, and I, you know, what troubles me and, and I think this is cut and dried. It's in writing. I have no doubt, but. What troubles me is. You could do this twelve more times in this center. Just open up a ten by ten window and start passing out the hot dogs. And, and the, uh, shooters and off you go. And, and we had a CDP that specifically. Said restaurants. Bars, everything was limited. Everything. Um, and you, and the CDP is like giant.
Okay, if, if. If I could go back and ask staff, give me your rationale again for how. Oh, never mind. You did. I'm sorry. That, that, that it's, it's not service area because it's the public area where. Anybody can come in and sit down and. And, uh, eat their food and their sack lunch or whatever. Correct? That's why it's not called service area?
That is correct. It's not, and I think part of the problem here is service areas in our just typical lingo. And perhaps I, I don't disagree. It could be better described. Uh, the idea of the, so that the CUP amendment is. Essentially similar to the Di Amore's operation that was in the spot before, if that's, if I'm correct, right, Jessica Di Amore's? Right, but there was a CUP. So once again, so to, to go back a bit, the CUP here is not for the restaurant. Restaurants are permitted by right. Now, restaurant has two different definitions in the LIP. One is restaurant and it talks about it being standalone and then below that is restaurant carryout. So we have. Two different definitions there, two line items. So this is the lower of the two. Uh, the restaurant use is a by right use in this specific plan. Uh, the item that's before us is. Can they serve alcohol? And so. If I'm not miss, miss speaking here, Jessica, please correct me, but. This is basically filling in what, or changing over what Di Amore's had in this spot, which was that it was open public seating. Uh, but the alcohol was limited to the patio and perhaps that's better than the word service area in our condition and it can be amended. Uh, but essentially staff is following the model here of what was previously approved on this site. Um, in that previously issued conditional use permit for the sale of alcohol.
Isn't it true though that Di Amore's had, uh, seating indoors also? The, the whole indoor space was part kitchen, part bathroom and part indoor seating area, right?
Mostly.
Mostly.
They had, yes, they had an indoor seating area and then they also had the ability for folks to take their food out onto this patio.
Yeah, so it was.
I, I'd like Jeff to read that, that sentence you just read about how. You can't, the public can't go out there. You just read something saying you can only serve.
You have to, you have, you can't buy alcohol without buying food, is what I was talking about.
Yeah, but you had something where they had to be, they had to be patrons.
I think on the standalone argument, a place like the tennis club is distinguishable and that the restaurant there really is. A separate structure and, and runs independently of whether there's tennis happening there or not. Whereas this, the, the so-called restaurant component is a much smaller ancillary part of what is essentially this wellness business.
But the Swallow Cafe, which is the, the, the tennis court. Has a very limited and defined service area. Which is the inside and outside. And if it rains, they can move part of it inside. It's very specific. It's not just. We don't count it. And that's what we're doing here. We are now saying that restaurants, as long as they have a kitchen. Don't have to count. Service area.
It seems like we're mixing stuff up. If, if. The, the service area argument. We didn't apply the, the service area argument to Howdy's, right? Because that's the same situation. It's a fair place where people can come and sit. If they want to. You know, buy a hamburger at Whole Foods or whatever, they can come out there and sit, right? They have. So it's not counted as service area. This seems to be, to be the same situation. My problems. With it, I, I just don't see how it's gonna work, how they're going to be able. I don't see how they're going to be able to comply with the conditions that we're putting in, uh, to the permit. I, I'm. I'm less troubled by the categorization. Is this a. Standalone or is it a takeout or is it this or is that? I, I'm, I'm just having trouble seeing how it's going to work. And the problem with that is, is that. It's their problem to make it work. It's not. If we put the conditions in place. If they can make it work, fine. If they can't make it work. Then, um. They have to enforce it. Be shut down.
Well, I also, I also want to point out, there's not one word in this whole resolution. That tells how we're gonna find that out.
Well, it's the same way we have with every other restaurant, isn't it? I mean, that, it's unskated, but.
You can say that, uh, every other restaurant, we will never inspect and never look at their books. That, that kind of makes everything moot. And that's basically what happens is that our planning staff has no ability. To go ahead and, I mean, look at your books.
It wouldn't be planning. It would be code enforcement, wouldn't it?
It would, well, whoever it is, they're part of planning, would have no ability to do that. And there's no reporting period. And there, so. Why don't we just say one percent? You know, I mean, it doesn't matter because it's not gonna be looked at and. This is the problem. You can look on the face of it. There's much, I don't consider there's a chance in hell. That people are gonna eat more than they drink when you're getting sandwiches. And, uh, in general, because a lot of people. Are kids. Or don't drink or whatever. And, um. And then you have absolutely no enforcement mechanism.
So let me ask about that staff. What's, what's? What you're feeling about enforcement of these provisions on this restaurant and every other restaurant? That has the same type of permit where the, where the. The alcohol sales has to be less than, uh, the food.
When we've had to address that in the past, um. We've simply just asked the applicant or the, the, the operator. Uh, to provide us essentially with. Testimony or affidavit. We don't actually get a copy of their, their tax return. Uh, but where this all stems from, and I don't know how the ABC. Uh, folks, and that may be something that Marnie, uh, can address, uh, from her experience with them. You know, they have a requirement that under this type of the license. A substantial amount of the sales, uh, comes from food and not the, and, and not the drinks. And the idea there is that. Uh, you, you're preventing a bar because if, uh. You're requiring the purchase of food, uh, you, you, the sale of food, you're preventing someone, you're, or just folks from coming in and. And ordering a glass of wine and another glass of wine and having that, that would end up functioning as a bar. But in the past. As I mentioned, we've asked basically for an affidavit from the, uh, the operator of the restaurant.
To, to, to Jeff's question or point there, it, it's maybe one thing to have a restaurant where. A typical entree is twenty-five bucks and you get a glass of wine for ten or fifteen bucks. Versus here where you might get a sandwich for ten or twelve bucks and then a glass of champagne for fifteen bucks. It's maybe a different. It's, it's a different concept here in terms of. You're not going there for food really, in the same way that you go to a restaurant to eat and sort of incidentally have a drink with your dinner.
Yeah, and you're, you're also. Again. Would you take? If I could get a li, a forty-one license. At. A shoe store. Can I have a, open, an open season on outside? You know, can I have a little area that's walled off for none of the people in the shoe store can use it? But they can come around the front and buy a, a bottle of wine from me and sit at wherever they feel like. Uh, because it's open to the public. That's not what our codes are all about. They just aren't. And in this case, it's cumulative. And, and in this case. We're supposed to be limited to five takeout restaurants and I think we counted thirteen in those shopping centers. Um, five for the whole city. So. There's, there's. And then we have these conditions we're gonna have to take out of here. Saying it has to be a service area. You can't drink there. And all this stuff, uh. It was written not to allow this.
Mark?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I just need some. Clarification on this condition number ten where it says no offsite sale of alcohol shall be permitted. Alcohol shall only be served. Within the approved service areas as demonstrated on the project floor plan. And so that means that would be that hundred and sixty-five square feet. Right? Where you have two ADA approved bathrooms and probably a counter and a kitchen and everything else. So where? Where is this, this approved area that? Uh, the alcohol is gonna be served if it's not outside. And you're not counting that as, that outside area as, uh, service area. And you're not counting that as that outside area as, uh, service area.
That's my conundrum. Uh. Maybe. Jessica or Richard can address that.
And and I understand Commissioner Wetton, I think that's where the wording of that condition, I don't think staff. I think unfortunately, we just got caught up in how we usually speak, I think a worded better would be. That the alcohol is only for consumption within, um, the interior space and then on the adjoining patio. Uh, much like, uh, for Howdy's. And also to be clear, also for the commission, and I recommend. Uh, speaking with the applicant, if you have questions on this, what staff reviewed and what staff is presenting tonight was an application. For a restaurant that, or carryout restaurant that was open to the public, so in a way, this is kind of like. Uh, the the tennis club, our understanding when we reviewed this application. Is that anyone off the street could walk in. Purchase food there. Sit down, uh, inside or outside on the patio area. Consume that food and then leave, or you you know, the consume the food or the beverage and then leave. The business, they did not actually have to take part in a spa treatment, now you can. That was the understanding that we had in our review of this, it was. Uh, essentially, I look at it as kind of a way for them to expand their business, it seems that, uh. And I'm sure they'll talk to this, that food seems to be where the the profits are these days, it's not retail or anything like that. Uh, so that is what I want to be clear, that what staff reviewed, it wasn't. A model where you had to partake in the staff and in the in the spa services. It was, this is, you know, if you wanna go there tomorrow and pick up your lunch, eat there, or pick it up and leave. Uh, that was the type of operation, it was open to the general public.
I I think this is distinguishable in a couple ways, one is that Howdy's is essentially and totally a restaurant. And so, to this, to be selling alcohol as an ancillary to the the existing restaurant use there. That makes sense, it is a standalone restaurant. Here, the analogy to say this is would be a standalone thing, and by the way. The restaurant carryout definition also begins any restaurant. And we've defined restaurant as standalone, so every, anything that's restaurant is standalone. The analogy with the tennis club would be if you had a little shack right on the tennis court. That was integrated with the the area of play. Uh, whereas in reality, that it's separate tennis courts, one thing, there's a separate building that is standalone, that is the restaurant. So it's not, it's not the same degree of integration they're talking about here about. This is a big wellness treatment center, and by the way, in this little nook over here, we're calling this a restaurant. It's just, it's it's pushing the definition too far for me.
Well, the question, Richard, would be, could the, uh, CBD oil guy? Wall off hundred and sixty-five square feet in front of his, in front of his shop and say. I'm a restaurant, come get your, come get your, uh, drinks here, and he can sit in front of Whole Foods. And it's essentially exactly the same situation. And, uh, there's tables at Whole Foods. It's it's exactly the same situation. Or could I, you know, and and. And. There has to be some consistency, how many restaurants have ever been approved in Malibu that are hundred and fifty-five square feet? Zero. Ever. They don't make restaurants that small. So, I don't know, if everybody's done asking questions, I gotta make a motion for denial. Uh, on on. The fact that it exceeds, it exceeds the CDP allowance for the shopping center. And is inconsistent with. The conditions of operation. And, uh, not an ancillary use of a health spa since it is not. Allowed to be used in the health spa. So that's my motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second it.
To clarify, you, the the motion is denied for. Which which finding are you saying you can't make, is it, uh, you're saying that the the service area is not in compliance with the specific?
Number, I'm saying number one, it exceeds the restaurant area of the CDP for the shopping center.
Oh, I can't support that because because you're 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 changing the rules for this place rather as opposed to Howdy's.
No, because.
You're calling that public area, service area.
Re- reason I'm not is because, well, that's inconsistent with what we've done anywhere else in Malibu. Uh. And how is, Howdy's is an, uh, is. Basically enclosed. And limited. This is, this is classified under our CDP as open space. Okay? Not a, not a restaurant. Um.
There's no request to rezone here, so you.
Oh, there is, because it's zoned under a specific plan for that specific building by the city council. Under specific conditions. That is a zone. Separate zone for that one, one shopping center. And it's in our, it's in our, uh, all our staff report and all that, there's a whole section in the planning department, long-term projects on it. That a thousand pages at least, uh, that's a condition.
You're saying because people would pick up food and they would eat in the open space that it's. Co-opting that as part of the restaurant? I'm just trying to, uh, we need to be able to, we need to like take the evidence and the the findings to the findings why and why, uh.
Restaurants are allowed to be four thousand square feet in that shopping center. Uh, the space used by the kitchen takes it up to thirty-eight ninety-one. There's a hundred and nine square feet left over, and this exceeds that.
Hey, you're not gonna get me, John, there are other reasons to deny it that you can come up with, but you're not gonna get me on that one.
And also violates, uh, condition eight, nine, and ten. And a whole bunch of others, if people want to throw them in.
You you mean, uh, finding eight, nine, and ten?
No, the findings, John, are on ten of, ten of thirteen.
Yeah.
Well. Condition.
Finding eight is the proposed use is is consistent with the goals, objectives, policies, and general land use of the general plan. Nine is the project complies with all applicable requirements of state and local law. And were you saying that it wasn't compliant with specific, I thought you were trying to say it wasn't applied to the specific plan because it. Was requiring more service area than. Then was allowed into the specific plan, is, did I have that wrong?
It isn't, it doesn't comply with the. General conditions of our, uh, municipal code, which Craig. Gave you the definition of restaurants. Both of them takeout and the other one, depending on which one you want to use. So that doesn't comply, it doesn't account, it doesn't comply because it does not count the employees required. And and that was. Dramatically stated when nobody's gonna pick up anything and. Uh, clean anything or do anything out there because. It's open to the public, uh, that's not, not even reasonable. Uh, what were the other findings?
I think, I think John would be, um. Uh, not finding number four, that the proposed use is compatible with the land use presently on the subject property. Um, that that's, you're basically saying it's not, doesn't comport with their existing CDP.
And. And Trevor, I think the commission. Needs to tailor this not to the restaurant, but to the alcohol use, because the restaurant is not before them.
Why isn't it before us? The separate use on that particular building. It is separated and the rest of the building is not allowed, not allowed to use it.
The specific plan identifies restaurants as permitted uses without the need of a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is required for alcohol service per the specific plan.
Okay, but, uh, like, let me ask you this, on houses. You can't build a house under eight hundred square feet. Right? Prohibited. But you can, and this is in our our zone. Is there anything in the code that says you could build a hundred and sixty-five square foot restaurant?
For example. Um, John's Garden is a restaurant. Because the food is made to order, they.
A lot bigger than a hundred and sixty-five square feet.
That's not specifically their seating, though. Um, coffee shops, uh, we also look at coffee shops and. Consider them as restaurants because of the fact that you. It's prepared per your order, so our code doesn't have a minimum on the size of a restaurant. Um, when we did the interpretation, the council policy on restaurants, it was more in how they functioned. It didn't have to do with size, and that's part of where additional clarification on what is a carryout restaurant comes from. From the council policy, uh, so. Once again, the specific.
This this serves booze and it's not allowed to be carried out. It's catch twenty-two, there's all this, that's the problem with this, there's all these catch twenty-twos, it's a carryout restaurant, but you can't carry out your booze.
Carryout restaurants does, does not mean that you're only, it it's, it's a bad term. But it does not, the definition is, is is states that. That we use the word carryout, but then it it essentially it's you're picking up your food from the counter and carrying it to a seat. Uh, it doesn't have to be carried out of the premises, uh. It it's bad, the, I think our code could be written better there. Um, perhaps a self-service restaurant would be a better wording, but the term they use is carryout. But it still includes restaurants where you eat on site.
It is, it's. And we were told in the staff report, it was a simple, simple menu, and now we're told that things are cooked there. Okay, um. As far as I can, and it's, you cannot carry out. What you're getting. Uh, the conditions say you must be served there, the booze, you must be served the booze. In the service area, it's it's, uh, but these general provisions are enough, uh.
So it, what you're saying is basically there is no provision for consuming booze. On site because every usage would is necessarily carry out.
No, I'm saying that, uh, condition number nine says, um. Alcohol shall only be served within the service area. Only be served within the service area, you're not carrying it out, it's served to you.
Okay, Dennis?
Commissioner Massey, do you have a specific finding, so?
No, I did, uh, three, what was it, you may keep track of it.
The one I said?
Uh, uh, four, uh. One. One, uh, two. Three, four, how about that, uh? Five, it's not compatible because there's no more use for it, uh. And, uh. And I'm gonna find seven too, because we haven't counted the extra employees. And it's, it's not, the number eight specifically, it's not, we, as we know, this takeout of booze. We're supposed to have five in Malibu, we've got, uh, over twenty. So it it violate, number eight violates that. Um. Well, I can say nine too, our 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 general plan is part of our municipal code and it says limit takeout.
But the general plan's addressing liquor stores, uh, not restaurants. With alcohol service, uh, perhaps, I think where the commission's trying to.
When we consider the wine, when we consider the wine bars. We didn't call them restaurants, we called them takeout. And we gave specific rules on that one that's in, in, um.
Yeah, th- they didn't ask to be called restaurants themselves, they they were, they were straight up that they were retail sales.
Yeah.
Incidentally, incidentally, you could have a sip.
I I think, Trevor, correct me if I'm, I. I think the findings perhaps that the commission is getting at are two and three, and it's that they. Is that what they're, there's an issue with this being physically suitable for the sale of alcohol. And then the the sale of alcohol doesn't fit perhaps the character of the space.
Well, it also is this code violation. Your zoning code violation, I don't know which one you want to call that under, but it's under a. Civic Center Special District zoning code. It's in our, it's was. Done by the city council, it takes five years to do all that stuff. And it's very simple to read, it's a specific code for that shopping center.
Yeah, that that that's, that's why I think we're just trying to hone in here, just that we can't be denying the the restaurant. Operation, which is by right and is a ministerial approval, it's the alcohol that's that's up, that's being considered right here, and so. The, uh, the considerations are, you know, that that you're gonna find that the alcohol service, you can't make the findings to allow the alcohol service. And that's why Richard was pointing at at numbers two and three, it's, which seem to be some of the the justification. For, um, you know, that there there wasn't enough area for people to be consuming the alcohol. And then also the character of the of of the, of the center seemed to be what was. The focus of the commission, if you want to go through the other ones, then I think we need to get more specific connection. Between why those findings can't be made, or if you want to stick with two and three, as Richard laid it out, it's up to you.
But on that, I I do consider this a violation of. The CDP on food service, because it limits them to four thousand square feet, and this is more like. Forty-four hundred and eighty or something.
So that would be finding four, the proposed use is compatible with the land use presently on the subject property. You're saying that it's, it exceeds the land use specified for the subject property.
Yes. And and those three are enough, I mean, it's, it's so far out of bounds. Uh, on all these little ticky other things, that if you pass it as it is now, it. Number one could not be enforced, and there's, there's. Conditions that would not allow it to be run, and. The other thing I want to add, just in general, is it's next to us. The biggest feature of the shopping center when they went to get it approved, the top playground. Okay, so anyway, that's my motion.
So the motion is is to deny, uh, for the, uh. Because of the ability to make findings two, three, and four, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, I have, I will second it for, uh, purposes of a vote. Um, can we call the roll, please?
Uh, that's after you get a motion. Time for further discussion.
Sure.
Uh. I can't go along with finding four. And I I think the idea is that, that. Compulsion to paint as broad a brush as possible when it's not necessary. Um. And that's the essence of of compromise. Let me ask a question of staff before I get off onto this thing, that that they. John's point is that if. If we allow, if we were to allow this. What would keep every other. Tenant on the shopping center. From doing the same thing, from poking a hole in a wall and selling. Beer, wine, and food. How, how? It's actually something that kind of intrigues me, what? What response would there be to that?
My response would be that the shopping center was calculated with a certain amount of service area. And that is why, uh, from what I could tell, they don't require a CUP. For these types of uses, is because essentially they were. Allowed, uh, Jessica's the correct numbers here, but they were allowed X, and so. Uh, provided that the area for food service doesn't exceed. What was approved, uh, in in terms of. The the actual dedicated space and then the public seating. Uh, that that would be it, that they would be limited by that, so every time somebody opens up. I mean, if they, uh, do ten small holes in the wall, you know, we're still gonna count that square footage and compare it to the overall, so that the seating area. Doesn't, um, go beyond the seating area.
You're gonna measure what area, I mean, uh, 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 let's just carry that a little further, you open up a hole in the wall and there's a, there's a counter. And you can come in and you can buy an ice cream, uh, or a beer or whatever, uh, if you've got the proper license. What area are you going to count as service area?
That count, the. The counter and the. The counter and the the floor space around it in which people can stand. Uh, stand or sit. Uh, that would be, that's the city's practice of counting a service area. So we'd be looking at that. Service area number and comparing it to the overall for the center.
Okay, but then you're back to saying that the one hundred and some square feet in the health spa is the service area. Only. No, you're you're saying, you've said, I think, that that, okay, you're saying that would be service area. But mainly it's the eight hundred and some square feet outside that the service area. And I think maybe Jeff's point is you've already taken that up. So you couldn't open up another.
Oh, no, that's that's.
No, no, that's not my point. My point is that we, that area is public seating. And it's not to be counted as the restaurant service area total, just like the similar situation at Howdy's was not counted against the total. Uh, service area for the shopping center. That's why I'm having trouble with what John is proposing because I don't, I don't, I don't think there's a problem there, but I I think. I I think that John's right i- in the sense that. You could. You know, with very, you know, with a twenty square foot counter and no place to sit, you could, you could. Nobody's going to do that, but I mean, it is possible.
Well, my example is is is. Uh, I already gave an example. You walk over to, you can walk over to, uh, Whole Foods. And sit in front of Whole Foods. That that is counted as seating. You can walk over to Howdy's, sit there with your, uh. Tequila shooter. You can walk over to the 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 this supposed service area. And so you could have twelve different bars in that restaurant. In that shopping center. And granted, they're supposed to. Supposed to hang out together. Good luck.
Um, no, no, I I I get all that, but I I still don't see a a path to including the. The seating area outside as service area because we didn't count it as service area in the Howdy situation. It doesn't have anything to do with whether it's a more of a restaurant or less of a restaurant or standalone or not standalone. It's all comes down to the question of what you, whether you count that public seating area as service area, and I can't.
Ask you this, Jeff. Are you saying that this is now a new president precedent for the city? We didn't count it for Howdy's for who don't what reason why? So every restaurant in the city doesn't have to count their outside seating as service area.
No, no, because lots of outside seating area is exclusive outside seating area. This area was when we, when the, when the specific plan was adopted, it was my recollection is that this was all to be. Open to the public. You didn't have to buy anything to come sit there. Uh, you could, you know, anybody could wander in with their pigeons and dogs, but. But that's not the same thing as areas where, uh, where it's exclusive, where you come in and you sit at a table and you order from a waiter or whatever.
Trevor, your hand is up.
Yeah, I I didn't want to interrupt the 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 debate here. Uh, I think it's productive here to 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 sort these issues out. I just wanted to raise before you took the vote, um, whether you wanted to give the applicant an opportunity to withdraw and modify if they wanted to take advantage of that. That's something you often do. So I just wanted to raise that before you voted.
Well, once we're ready for the vote, uh, Jeff, you just object to finding four.
Yeah.
Object to the other findings.
I think two and three are fine. Or I, but you know, I I. Not being able to make two and three is fine. And I, you know, I don't, I've never been one to say, well, we've got to load everything into this. Um, I know that happens sometimes with the city council level, you know, you can't find any of the findings.
But if we take, does it make you happy if I amend the motion to take four out?
Makes me happier.
Okay, and we can always try two votes then. I I, um. With Craig's permission, I'll take number four out.
Fine with me.
Then the amended motion is to deny, uh, inability to make findings two and three, correct?
Correct.
But why do we ask, uh, the applicant?
Well, before we, before we open that. Can, is there any? Way to imagine that there's any sort of half measures here? I mean, it seems like it's either. All or nothing. But what would they be? What would they be revising?
Why don't we ask him? Well, it won't take, it won't take long. He's already spent an hour and a half on it.
Yeah, Michael, your hand is up. Can can you be, uh, please brief and and just respond to that specific question like? What, what, what could you revise?
No, 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 no. The question, I'm sorry, excuse me. The question should be, would you like us to continue this item to give you a chance to make? Uh, to make revisions in it? If we ask him, what revisions are you going to like? Then we're going to debate those revisions and whether or not or not. That's not our job to plan.
No, you're right. You're right. You're right. Michael, what's A V?
Is muted.
Okay, I'm here.
There you are.
Yes, I would, I would greatly appreciate that opportunity.
Okay.
So what, what, uh, thank you, Michael. So then what would our motion be? We'd be gr- granting a continuance for what purpose?
We would. Grant a continuance for the date uncertain uncertain to, uh, allow the applicant at the time to revise his application. Right?
Is that a motion, Commissioner Jennings?
Well, I can't because there's a motion on the table, but John can make that motion. He could withdraw his and make that motion.
John.
He's muted.
Uh, I I'll make that motion, uh, and withdraw the prior motion.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Um, i- is there?
Just to clarify, that's to a date uncertain, correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion on on that motion? Hearing none. Can we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Witten?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. If that item has been decided, then. Um, thank you, Michael and Marty for bearing with us. And I I would would like to take a, it's eight fifty-three, like, take a seven minute break, understanding that the next item is probably, hopefully fairly short, but. Let's take a quick break and and refresh ourselves.
I never know how much, how surprised you could be.
You never know. So back fresh and sharp at nine P M. Thank you.
Get yourself.
And please, ever.
It's nine oh three.
Rebecca was good. I saw her at nine o'clock.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I was here too, but I didn't. I didn't see anybody else.
Didn't turn on the camera, understand.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so we're back. Hopefully everybody has their hot dogs and champagne now. And, uh, we're on to item five B. CDP number twenty-two dash zero one three. At two, three, five, seven, five Civic Center Way. This is, um, coastal development permit. Yeah, twenty-two dash zero one three and temporary use permit number twenty-two dash zero one zero. An application for the fortieth annual chili cookoff and carnival, a four day event, Labor Day weekend. And a one day private fundraising event. Staff report, please. Uh, welcome, Philip.
Evening, Chair Hill and members of planning commission. Please excuse the typo and the, um, front page. But I'm here to present CDP number, um. Twenty-two dash zero one three, T U P number twenty-two dash zero one zero and. Next slide, please. This application is for the chili cookup, the fortieth annual chili, uh, chili cookoff taking place over a Liberty Weekend and. At the vacant parcel located at two, three, five, seven, five Civic Center Way. Uh, picture here is the vicinity map and aerial photograph. The event is located on the Civic Center Way across from by the sea park. Next slide, please. As in twenty twenty-one, the applicant has proposed a private concert to take place on Thursday, September first, twenty twenty-two. With approximately four hundred guests, um, this event will feature live music, food and beverages and auction items. Starting the following day, the public chili cookoff event will include approximately forty-five to sixty-five vendors. And an estimated eight thousand guests. On Friday and five hundred thousand, five, five thousand guests per day, so Saturday through Sunday, Monday. The event breakdown will be Tuesday, September sixth. It'll be concluded on September eighth. Next slide, please. Here is the event site plan, which shows the area for the amusement ride and games, vendor booths, stage and seating areas. Next slide, please. Additional off-site parking lots are available as demonstrated in the figure shown. Parking will take place on, um. A few parcels in the surrounding area. First one will be, uh, City Hall. And then two, three, eight, zero, five Stewart Ranch Road, which is the Wave Enterprises and Medical Offices Building. Three, five, four, two Coastview Drive, which is also owned by Wave Enterprises. Three, six, zero, two Winter Canyon Road. Two, three, five, two, five Civic Center Way, which is only for eighty parking only. Additionally, there will be a ride share drop off located at two, three, seven, eight, nine Civic Center Way. The applicant has provided an update that the, uh. Parking lot at three, eight, zero, six Cross Creek. Will no longer be used and the applicant is looking into other options for parking and will be requesting a further amendment. Once they finalize the other lots. Next slide, please. In summary, staff recommends adopt. In summary, staff recommends adopting resolution number twenty-two dash zero four five and approving C P number twenty-two dash zero one three. And CUP number twenty-two dash zero one zero with inclusion of the following condition where. The event, the event should shall comply with the state of California and Los Angeles County COVID nineteen social distancing requirements. And or other requirements that they need at this time. And this and staff and the applicant is here to answer any questions.
And Philip, perhaps I just want to make sure it's clear. Last time I read the report, I recalled the applicant was asking for amplified music on Monday.
Yes, that's true. That's correct.
And so I wanted to make the commission aware of that. In general. In the past, we have, or the commission has approved the event to have amplified music. That lasts up until Sunday. And then Monday, there was no amplified music, given the fact that it's weekday. And this is directly below residences. So that has been what the the planning commission has approved in the past. And staff followed that model. And however, this year, though, the applicant was requesting to have amplified music. On Monday, and so we mentioned that we would, we informed the applicant that we would bring that up with the commission. And that is something that you are more than welcome to disagree with staff on. However, like I said, staff just followed what the commission had voted for in the past. Thank you. Chair Hill, you're muted.
Sorry, I was gonna say, let's do disclosures before we get into any questions for staff and I, Casey, I will get to you momentarily. Jeff. Dennis.
None.
Mark.
I spoke with Casey from the Boys and Girls Club this afternoon regarding the. Application.
John.
And I spoke with Casey also regarding the application.
And I spoke with Casey too. We talked about. Signage about masks, which we can get into in the in the discussion here. So let's see, we have Casey here to make any presentation as the applicant.
Yes.
And so Casey, you have fifteen minutes. You can reserve any portion of that for. Potential rebuttal if if I see there's at least one public comment.
And that there will be two public, or there are two identified public speakers on the side of.
Okay, so Casey, with that in mind, take it away.
Um, thank you so much, Commissioner and everyone here on our call. Um, I am not requesting amplified music on Monday, so I'd just like to clarify that. I'm not sure where the breakdown is. But that is not a request that's being made on our behalf. And if it was in any written form, that will be amended. So again, we are not requesting amplified music on Monday. We're staying within the. The confines of the currently approved TUP. So I will look into why that is in question. But it is not being requested. Um, as for the event itself, um, you know, as always, you know, this is our fourth year. I'm hosting the event for the community at large and all of our visiting attendees, and we are thrilled to do so. Um, this is a long time cherished event in Malibu, which brings our community and our surrounding communities together. It's a family focused event. Um, which obviously involves carnival, food, different vendors. Um, it's always been well supported. It's a, what I would classify as a heritage event for the city of Malibu. And it is also a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club of Malibu as well as. The Wellness Center, which provides mental health and wellness services to all of our Malibu Public School children. Their families and currently our aging population in Malibu. Happy to answer any questions specific to the TUP and the event. And I guess I'll reserve that time moving forward. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Casey. That takes us to other members of the public. Who's first? Rebecca.
Our next speaker will be Ashlyn Kearns, followed by Ryan Embry.
Ashlyn Kearns, are you here? Can you hear us? Can we hear you?
Hi there. I am here. I am actually just supporting Casey in case there's any questions that come up, but I do not have anything to say at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan Embry.
Hey, Ryan. Thank you. I do support the cause. I think it is a tradition. And I want to, however, make it clear that the. Repeat occurrences creating the tradition should never trump the requirements, the findings and so forth you have to make. So I hope you can be very clear on that one. The question that I have is a particular concern to one of the lots here. I think you're calling at three, five, four, two Coastview Drive. Although the access appears to be off of. The east-west area at the end of Stewart Ranch Road. And that's for this now off-site standalone kind of use of a parking lot for. I guess employees, film shoots, weddings, chili cook-offs, whatever. And it has nothing to do or against the chili cook-off. It has to do with particular. Uh, renting out or public use of this dirt lot. And I had been in communication with Richard Malika about this because when Pepperdine, when they asked to use it last time. The fire suppression equipment was not included. A lot of people are driving hybrids. A lot of people are driving all-electric cars and those things can go up in fire like you can't believe. This is an unpaved lot. It's not necessarily smooth and flat and could have problems. So I had asked that fire suppression equipment, fire extinguishers or a mobile tender or something. Be utilized when there's parking at that facility. That was not conditioned on the use of it. I would like you to condition that now. I do not think that affects the request. By. The chili cook-off operators, but it, this is at the base of a hill where fire blew through this area. And there were stored palm trees that were. Really not trying to be sold. They were just stored there. I think the roots grew into the ground. And they caught on fire in the two thousand seven fire and propagated the fire with palm fronds glued over to the to the shopping center. It took out our hillside. Uh, at Malibu Canyon Village for a hundred residents. Fire burned up to their balconies of the entire A building. The the north-south building over the bluff there. This is a problem. And it doesn't appear to be mitigated, and I need you to mitigate it. Require fire suppression equipment or a certified person and equipment at the ready for that lot at all times. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Ryan. I see Joe Drummond's hand there too. Joe.
I just wanted to say that, of course, we love the chili cook-off and we attend every year and our kids love the Boys and Girls Club. They all went to Malibu High and they. Use their services, so please approve this. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Um, okay, so we're back up to the commission table. Anybody?
She has thirteen minutes or something.
That's correct. Casey, sorry, you have thirteen minutes to rebut. For.
Or not.
Do a Zoom juggling performance. I don't know. Casey, do you have anything you want to add at this point?
Sorry, I was waiting to be unmuted. Thank you so much. Um, I believe Mr. Embry is referencing the wave lot. And I don't have the actual address in front of me, which is the Pepperdine Lot. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, um, I, I, I hear you. I'm with you. It's a privately owned lot. Um, I don't know how that lot normally operates. Happy to work with Pepperdine. Within the constraints of however, you know, that works for them. I can't juristic. Um, how their, their lot is operated. Um, but it is generally used as a overflow for just volunteers and staff. It's not a general public use lot. For the purposes of the event.
Well, just on this one point, let me ask you if you could clarify, what if any fire equipment do you have standing by? Uh, for this whole event and where would it be located?
That is a fantastic question. Um, I don't have, you know, I don't feel equipped to answer that because I am not the fire department who is heavily involved. In the processing of this entire event and TUP. So, um, I don't feel equipped to answer that. I don't know if anyone from the city staff would like to take that or.
Well, I guess, I, I'm not, I don't. I, I haven't noticed what fire department may or may not be there during the events, and so I'm just wondering.
They're, they're on staff at all times. They're, they're present. We have, it's required via the city.
So the question would be whether some of them are arrayed so that they're over towards the west side over there somewhere close to the. The parking on the west side. Now I'd see a lot of hands. I think I saw Dennis first. Go ahead, Dennis.
So. Answer this, I feel. Since we probably have more electric cars in our town than a lot of cities, the whole states probably. Um, I'm not sure that having a fire suppression or the fire department everywhere is. Really feasible. I mean, you've got charging stations down the street here at Civic Center, and I don't see the fire department there all day or ready to. Fight the fire in case when they plug in, the car catches on fire or anywhere else that you have to plug into. So. I don't think this is, you know, the, the car can catch fire down the street. This is easy as it can in this lot. So I think it's a negative. Thing to talk about. There's nothing to talk about here.
Okay, John, Jeff, who went first?
Jeffrey did.
Jeff.
Yes, we dealt with this lot and this issue. Been a while, maybe John remembers. It was in connection with parking for a. A construction project that was going on.
I remember.
And we had. Was about the timing and what time people were going to arrive and what time they were going to leave and all the rest of that stuff. And we. I do believe that it's an issue that needs to be addressed. And it needs to be addressed in generally the same way we addressed it. Last time. I know we had issues about no standing grass and other stuff. If I had a better memory, I could tell you what conditions we put on it. Maybe staff can find that.
We put rock down.
We put rock in, and I think we maybe had some no smoking signage or something.
Yes, that's, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
Put rock down on that lot. That lot was rented by Ellison when he was building three houses.
Yeah.
Or his staff. He rented it for approximately two years. At the time, we required fire extinguishers on site and there were some foliage mitigation. And some other things. They also had a guy who had to be there when it was open. Now. Since then, about a year ago, we approved it, I believe, a two-year lease by Ellison. Which he wanted five and we had to. Say no, it can't be a permanent parking lot. So we said two years, then he'd come back and see if he could renew it. At that point, we put on some different. Um, restrictions, but they were sort of the same. I haven't seen any cars there, so maybe he's done doing what he's doing. But it's probably a sublease from him. I believe he still is leasing it from Pepperdine. So. I, I, what I. I think Dennis has it backwards. I mean, electric cars tend to catch on fire. Also, and when they do, you can't put them out. So.
But you'd have to do that all over town. What are you talking about?
All over town, you don't bring five thousand people in for four hours. Okay, this is five to eight thousand people.
So we're gonna follow around every electric car that shows up to the carnival.
We're gonna follow up every event we have with five to eight thousand people and make sure there's some fire suppression. These are vacant lots. At least I'm gonna propose that because. What's the big deal? They're charging probably fifteen, twenty bucks a head for the cars. And. It's a danger to a major condo complex.
So, well, the question is. What, what is, what are reasonable precautions? And Dennis is suggesting we need take none. And so the question is, what, what, what other might be reasonable?
And we, I think we should just leave it up to staff to put in the same conditions we put on Ellison when he had construction vehicles there.
It, it does, I think it is a difference this time that the wave lot is going to be, is only going to be used by. Employees of the Boys and Girls Club or whoever is acting as staff. It's not going to be open to the public. Uh, as for parking, that's.
Yeah, but Jeff, remember that there's.
Hang on, John. Is that confirmed? Is that true?
That's what Casey said when she would make the presentation.
That is, that is correct. This is a lot that we reserve for staff and for primary volunteers. Um, currently, and I can say this undoubtedly, no one on my staff of forty people has an electric vehicle. I cannot confirm that for volunteers. I out, however, would like Ashlyn, who has her hand raised, who's on our team, she would like to provide some context if allowable.
Let's do that. Ashlyn.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to provide some clarity that we do have. Fire extinguish, fire extinguishers on site at every generator plus every fifty feet or so around the venue. Also, in all tents plus the carnival area, so we have at least fifty fire extinguishers on site. As well as near all concession, chili and backup house cooking areas.
As far as anybody knows, there's no necessary fire department presence west of Stewart Ranch Road, right? Every, everything's sort of concentrated around the carnival area, not out at the peripheries and any of the parking areas.
Yeah, I, I would think that the fact that it's going to be used for staff. Yeah, is helpful, but not, not sufficient. And I, I agree that we need to have staff come up with the. Uh, the kinds of protections that we provided before. Uh, when Ellison leased the lot, I agree with John.
We are so close to the residents.
Remember, you gotta remember.
John, John, let's go with Mark. He's had his hand up for a while.
Well, well, I wanted, maybe the staff can weigh in on what the, you know, what the conditions are. And then also, is it as simple as just notifying the fire department to, you know, in, in terms of their other duties that evening to just have a heightened awareness to keep their eye on it? I mean, it's not that far. From the site, you know, the cook-off site to this lot. It's, you know, three hundred yards. I mean, it's. No.
Yeah.
Touching on a sore subject with me.
I just want to point out that, number one, you're gonna have a lot of cars there. It's very close. Through the condos.
Yeah.
And I doubt if they have a fire truck stationed there. Which means that you gotta get through all that crowd up, up Civic Center Way to that parking lot. And we're literally talking here. About requiring them. To spend maybe two hundred bucks. You know, get a couple of fire extinguishers and there's gonna be somebody standing there anyway. Judging who's coming in and who isn't. Otherwise. You'd be a fool not to park there and not pay. Now, the staff report, as I remember, says there's a hundred staffers. And that doesn't count the carnival. So there could be a hundred, a hundred cars there. It's, it's not an unreasonable thing when you look at the size of this operation. So, uh, well, I'm gonna try to make that move. I have a couple of questions of Casey.
Hang on, before we go off this point, just in the nature of a straw poll, do we want to say? Couple of fire extinguishers, no smoking signage, any, I mean, what do we want to kind of?
And an employee. We need an, we need somebody to let people in and out.
Somebody on site over there. Is that?
They're gonna have. They'd be fools to leave it open when you're charging everywhere else.
Casey's hand is up again. Let's, let's just hear Casey.
Thank you. All parking lots, lots are staffed and have been in the past. Um, so that, that's a none, but we do that. And then. Um, Commissioner Mazza, with regards to the carnival employees, they do not park in that lot. They don't have their own vehicles. They arrive with the carnival. And are part of their caravan, which is part of backup house, so that is not additional employee parking, which is part of the event. The wave lot would be restricted for. The wave lot would be restricted for actual Boys and Girls Club employees and volunteers. Not those associated with the carnival.
So you, you, but you don't in general have a, a problem with us requiring a person there and a couple of fire extinguishers?
No, because we already do that. So that's something that we already provide and have provided. So that's not new for us.
You do have a couple of fire extinguishers in the plan there?
I don't know that specifically they're in the plan, that, that that's part of what's provided on site at each lot.
Well, we'll just put in the condition that, that way covered from, if you burn the condos down, at least we tried.
Yeah, now, before we move on from this, briefly, Ryan, what are we missing? In your view?
I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm scrambling.
Yeah, Rebecca, is, can you?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm here. My. My concern is that, that this is an off-site location. And it, it's kind of unfair for Casey to. Be responsible for it because it looks like there's some type of a contractual relationship. But it is related to the event. So you could just take it off the table. And that will take care of it, or they can come up with a monitor. Yeah, or a certified fire, like Jefferson, he's a certified fireperson. Maybe he can just be there the whole time. But we, look. Are they gonna post a ninety million dollar bond to rebuild Malibu Canyon Village when it burns? I mean, seriously, um, electric station. Uh, that's paved and publicly accessible. This has a limited access. It's at the end of a private road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I have a couple of questions. So Casey, just to clear a couple of things up. Um. Condition, and this is from talking to her today. Condition nine. I mean, condition eleven requires that, um, shutting down the intersection of Cross Creek Road and Webway and flashing a red light. And as everybody knows, that's a major, major commute. Uh, point. So she, and she has stated that she does not want the flashing light. So. I am not gonna, I'm gonna. Make a motion to delete that. And. We can check with her, but I did check with her today.
Which number are you talking about?
Number eleven.
Oh.
Okay.
And that is correct, Commissioner Maza. We do not want a flashing light. This was a recommendation of law enforcement, not of the Boys and Girls Club or the event itself.
Okay, and then.
But John, before you leave that area, the, the recommendation is a flashing light with traffic control people standing there.
Yeah, but you're talking stopping every single car that goes, wants to go to the valley on Friday at five o'clock.
You, you stand there and you go like this and you wave them through, you know, the, the, it's, I. I, I, the flashing light is just because you don't want the people to be hit, the people that are standing out there directing traffic. I think that it's probably a better solution.
Well, Casey said it did not work last time.
And, and all transparency, I, from my perspective and our operations team, it created actually more of a bottleneck. Um, than it created traffic flow. However, that being said, I am not a traffic planning expert and I am open to recommendations from anyone.
Okay, now, um, the other.
John, before we leave that one, my sense is that most of the time you would want the light to just function as normal and that that would be fine. But there might be a few moments, uh, peak, peak moments where it could be helpful to have a, a person there.
Uh, that's what the places are for.
Yeah.
Uh, but to say it's gonna flash for five hours at a time, four days. Uh, or whatever, six hours is gonna just cause a big problem. Um.
So it's, it's an option. It's not a requirement.
It's a requirement.
Well, I'm saying to, to propose that it be an option, but not necessarily required the whole time.
Then you have to decide on who makes the option choice. That's why I asked Casey.
And it's law enforcement.
Well, what happens if they're not there? Cause that now, well, I'll bring that up later, but we can work on that. Um, now, the other thing was. In condition number fifty-eight. Uh, they, they gave Casey Ernest's phone number. Now, we have always in the past, for as far as I know, at least thirty years. Required a contact. Twenty-four hour contact number for the residents of the condos in Harbor Vista. Or within a thousand feet of the thing in case. You had a problem. You left the Ferris wheel on all night or whatever the problem is to call. She does not want her number given out. So I think what we did in the past. As I remember, most of the time, we had a, somebody that. Kiwanis Club assigned to answer that phone number. Some events, we had the sheriff. Supervisor, but we required that the number be transmitted to every resident in that area. And I don't know if Richard remembers the last time we did it, who we used, but uh. Uh, you might wanna unhook Casey again.
Yeah, yeah, let's hear from Casey.
Uh, no problem. So. My understanding is that a contact from the event organizer needs to be available twenty-four seven. And I have made myself available to be that person and have done so. In the past years that we've operated the event. Um, I've heard from city staff, I've heard from city council, I've heard from planning commissioners throughout the event. Um, I was not informed that my phone number, my private phone number would may, be made public to, for public use. So I think that would be the discrepancy that would need clarifying. I'm happy to be available twenty-four seven. Um, but not on um, social blast, if you will. So if there's a misunderstanding on, on my, my end. I'm, I'm happy to, to hear that from you. Um, but I am available. Um, throughout the event and the duration of the event.
The question then is if, if a resident up the hill at two in the morning has a problem, uh, who do they call?
They call her, but just not at this number.
Well, what number then?
Well, that's pretty easy to go get a telephone number. Uh, and the Boys and Girls Club uh, can reduce their fundraising by the amount it costs to. Buy a burner phone or whatever you wanna do, but, but we can just leave it to staff to have her. Uh, uh, provide a phone number at which she will be available twenty-four seven.
He still, but the c- condition will be changed to provide that number to the residents. And right now, it just says that's what her phone number is.
Y- y- yeah, but the, the residents aren't gonna read this order anyway, but the, the, the. That there have to be some, there will have to be some advertisements, some, some circulation of the number so that people know who to call, just not this number.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, uh, now, let's see.
So this is, this is different than in previous years. Just, I just wanna clarify so I understand correctly.
Who's giving the residents a phone number?
What is the T U C, no, T U P noticed uh, by the surrounding residents or no?
It is.
So, so they could, we could provide that information on the, on the notice.
No, the notice has already gone added for this hearing.
What, what staff does, uh, what we've been doing for the, I forget how many years now is. Is part of the conditions of approval for the permits, the permit public and put it on the city's website. Uh, we have a number. Uh, we attach, you know, we include as part of the conditions of approval of who the contact is. And we make that number known when we um, have the postings on our website. We don't actually, we don't have the ability to. To reach out and contact each of the, the homeowners up above. Uh, but what we could do is. Uh, modify, obviously, we're gonna have to modify condition fifty-eight, uh, because they, she does not want us using that number. Um, and then just, I think, mon, Trevor, what do you think? Modify condition fifty-eight to say that. Uh, prior to the event, one, uh, two weeks before the event, the, the applicant shall provide us. With a twenty-four hour contact for the city to post on its website.
You're muted, Trevor.
Yeah, that sounds good. I was just typing as you were saying, Richard.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I, I wanted to go over a couple of other things. Um. We have required, they, one of the conditions is to man. The roadway on Stewart Ranch Road so nobody can park. But we have requirements that nobody can park for the event on the south side of Civic Center Way. Which needs also be policed. Um. I would add that to. To the same policing protocol because that's where you go in the, the uh. Chili Cook Off. Um. Then on number fifty-two. And that would be number fifteen. Uh, on number fifty-two. It's, it says, there's gonna be two sheriffs. And talking to Casey today, there's gonna be more than that, plus two private patrols, plus a SWAT team. Okay, so I think we should spell out. That the applicant's responsible for all. All sheriff's billing. For that, that event. Uh, because there's, it's not spelled out here. It's for two sheriffs. Well, you just go out and say you want two sheriffs and twenty, sign up. Roll in, then the city gets a big giant bill. So uh, I'm gonna add that if people don't really object big time. Um.
Trevor, hang on, hang on, John. Trevor, can you characterize what that looks like in the resolution?
Yeah, I'm gonna, condition fifty-eight.
Two.
Or the condition fifty-two, you said? All right. Do you want a larger deposit or are you just saying you wanna just have language that they're responsible for all um, law enforcement? Charges.
Yeah, there's actually three things that, that should be, I mean, probably in different sections, which they should be charged. Law, all law enforcement projects. They should pay the sales tax to the city, any sales tax they collect.
Wait, hold on. It, I got, um, let's finish fifty-two here. So we can probably make that change by. Um, this last sentence is the applicant shall be billed for any additional charges they may accrue. Um, you can just add in there, um, the applicant shall be billed for any additional charges for law enforcement services. They may accrue at the currently our rate. Does that work?
That works.
Yeah, or law enforcement or security, or is that the same thing?
There won't be security charges unless they hire security. So it'll be.
They're talking about hiring IPS and one other company.
Yeah, you had to pay them directly. The city wouldn't be billed for that, right?
Right, right, okay.
Right, but I just wanna make the point that. Five to eight thousand people there, two sheriffs isn't gonna cut it. So I don't know if you wanna. On fifty-two, it says, I think it says two sheriffs, doesn't it? The sheriff's deputies.
It requires that deposit, but this is just clarifying that they're responsible for any additional costs afterwards.
So Trevor, yes, for any additional charges for law enforcement personnel.
Right, okay, uh, then. Let's see here. And we got the Casey Ernest fifty, the phone number changed. Um. And I also like to add, well, and then, uh, Trevor, you got the one on Civic Center Way.
No, can you give me that language? That was condition fifteen.
Same language as. Fifteen. Fifteen just says. No parking against Stewart Ranch Road and. Civic, south side of Civic Center Way.
Okay.
Well, that's, yeah, that's it. Now, additions. One, I'd like to add the condition that uh. Craig had about. A COVID coordinator or what was it, Craig? You wanted. Signs about wearing.
Uh, my, 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 my question about that was that obviously you follow whatever the county uh, guidance is for any COVID protocols. But regardless, uh, at minimum, I think you'd wanna have some signage that's to the effect. I don't know the exact wording, but that. Mask is, masks are recommended but not required, assuming that's the case. For the purpose, for the reason that. It gives license to people who would like to wear a mask to feel comfortable about doing it and not feeling. Like, you know, if the, if the rule is just masks not required, then they might feel, people would look at them and think they're paranoid or something. Just, just let the people who care feel more comfortable if, if it says something like recommended but not required.
Okay, Richard, do we have, we, the city follows the county guidelines, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So, uh, the motion, I mean, the uh, condition would say, uh. The uh, operators of the chili cook-off will follow. Uh, city guidelines and post a sign that. Signs at the entrance that. Although masks are not required, they're highly recommended. Is that good enough, Craig?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm not particular on the wording. I just wanna let people feel free, let their.
Whatever you guys wanna make.
Yeah.
Okay.
Casey has her hand. You have a comment on that, Casey?
I'm sure, happy to provide signage. Um, not a problem. Wanna be inclusive of everybody's personal choice. Um, you know, being a Boys and Girls Club in a public school, we are a hundred percent on board with whatever the county's recommendations are. And are first and foremost in line to promote those and adhere to those. So just wanna remind everybody of that. Um, as for the charges with the police department, um. We, we have at any time, you know, two to five sheriffs on site. It depends on the high levels of occupancy when they come onboard. We have historically paid for all of those charges. That's not ever something that's been floated to the city. So I wanted to clarify that. And with regards to Stewart Ranch Road, we've never allowed parking on Stewart Ranch. That's never been part of the plan, nor has it been allowed, nor has there been parking there. We have signage, we have people walking Stewart Ranch. Um, we have people, traffic controllers that are, that are moving the traffic through there. Um, so I'm not quite sure why that came up, but that's never been part of the parking plan or the available parking plan. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you, Casey.
It's there because it's in that condition.
It's also, yeah, condition fourteen, that's a fire lane.
Yeah, okay, so, um, so on the mask signage, I don't, recommended but not required. I, I don't know how else you say that.
Okay, um. And just to make it clear. Uh, the operators of the event, you'll pay. Uh, all sales tax and, and parking tax due within thirty days of the close of the event. Is that normal, Richard? Is that thirty-day period the way it works?
I, that comes from our finance department. I, I think that would be normal. They give them a thirty-day period.
Now, I just have a general question. Uh, well, number one, does anybody else wanna add any? Conditions.
I just had a general question. Um, and it's. Has the, is the current state of the construction next door? Any different? Does it pose any new issues with respect to circulation? A- affecting ride share drop-offs, anything like that? Is it basically the same as it has been in the past or? Is the situation changed in any way that presents unforeseen issues?
Uh, they've announced that they're gonna close up the outside construction and start working on the inside. I believe they said within thirty days, Richard. I'm not sure. It, it's, it's before Labor Day or whatever it is.
The question is just whether there's anything unforeseen compared to what's happened in the past.
I, I don't believe there are any, I'm not aware of any road closures upcoming. Uh, it would be the same. And. I think the only other thing that we're working on in that area is getting, uh, La Paz to pull the, or, yeah, La Paz to pull the fence back. Which would open up those public parking spaces again. Uh, but no, I don't think there should be any other changes this year.
And then with the big orange and white tower, could, could there be like in, in those old time carnivals where the daredevil does a high dive into a bucket? Could we have that attraction here?
We should add it. Well, we'll get a kiddie pool.
Okay, perfect.
And we'll get you a horse to jump off on.
That's right.
And I'll give you ten bucks if you do it. Uh. Okay, now, so nobody has any other. okay, now, so nobody has any other conditions that they can think of?
No.
I, I wanna add, ask one general question to staff. As a staff report was written, there were five hundred and fifty-six parking spaces. Two lots were pending. And now we have one lot that isn't gonna be used. So, and we have five to eight thousand people in four hours. Do you consider that adequate for that many people and where are they gonna park if it isn't?
Philip, I think this parking standard to years past, correct?
Yes.
Uh, so even with, e- even, uh, with the exclusion of the one lot, they still are where the, the parking areas uh, meet what we have done in the past few years.
Yeah, I think they actually added another lot as compared to last year's application. But they are looking to secure more lots. I think that, um, they're projecting to rent more lots in Pepperdine, so they're gonna be coming back for another amendment to add those lots.
So there'll be an amendment, uh, we don't need to put something in saying if parking is less than four hundred or something that deals off or anything like that, because we can't have two pending lots and have them both not, not happen. And then have parking for three hundred or something and have eight thousand people show up.
We'll park over at Ralph's, don't forget.
I'll tell Ralphs that.
Well, they do, I mean, by practical matter, they do park there and they park in the Cobble Banker Lot and then the, the parking on Malibu Road behind the Urgent Care. And I mean, there's other unofficial parking.
That all happens. I'm just wondering there will be an amendment, so we'll know that there's adequate parking or, because right now, as far as I'm concerned, we don't know.
How they got along for the last forty years without worrying about that?
Well, maybe they didn't have pending when they came to us. And by the way, you don't plan events for eight thousand people and have no parking. It's just irresponsible. So.
Like I said.
You don't say, oh, they can go down to the shopping center and use theirs.
All right, well, let, let's focus on the question you asked about to, to, what condition do we need here?
Or do we need one? Are, are we gonna, Richard, are we gonna get a pending? If, if it never gets fixed and there's never a pending application, what happens?
Well, it looks like Casey has her hand up. Um, um, if there is a, so that's part of the reason for the traffic control with the Sheriff's Department. Um, and if there is an issue this year, then essentially it becomes something we follow up with, with their next permit and, uh, require, uh, you know, an, an extra lot, uh, if there is a parking problem. But I think we found in past years that they've managed it well, and as Philip said, there is additional parking this year. And they haven't, like I said, I'm not aware of us ever receiving complaints from the Sheriff's Department that there was ever a parking issue. Um, the, I think the one concern we've had, and Casey has done a good job to address it, has been to make certain that, uh, Stewart Ranch Road stays clear, uh, for emergency vehicle ingress. That, that has been the, the one issue. I think we, one year found there was a, many years, and maybe before Casey, when it was the Kiwanis Club, but there was an issue with folks trying to park there and, and they jumped on it. Uh, but that's really been the one parking problem I know of.
Okay, so you don't see a reason for any kind of?
I, I don't think so. In case you could speak to it, but I think this year they've, they've done a good job with it and, and every year it seems like she tries to get more and more parking and, and have a backup plan.
Casey, Casey, I think Richard has said what needs to be said. Do you have anything to add?
Um, I appreciate that. I just wanna provide some data to that. Um, thank you, Richard. So in the total confirmed spots that we have right now, it's seven hundred and ten parking spots um, at any one given time. And while on the highest concentration day, which is generally Saturday, we may see eight thousand guests. They are not there at the same time, right? So it, it's spread throughout the day. Um, and we also know that approximately thirty to forty percent of those guests are coming through ride share and Uber and different types of, uh, you know, transportation. And also to consider that of those guests, many of them are families. So you have an upwards of four people arriving in one car. So I think we do feel confident that our parking has been adequate and we have been able in those high concentration provide enough parking. Um, and we're really appreciative of all the parking partners that we've, um, been able to establish in Malibu.
All right, thank you.
Okay, last question of staff, as, and I didn't have time to read it today, but as I remember, there's an LIP provision that says you can't have events in the Civic Center until after Labor Day. And I wondered if we need some kind of, uh, variance or something.
And so that is why this is before you actually, i- it's, there's an LIP provision that states that if you're going to hold a event for more than one day and it's, uh, essentially, uh, between, there's, there, there's criterias, but basically if it's in a, uh, designated public area, coastal resource, which Legacy Park is in this area, uh, and be, so because of that, we are processing this as a CDP consistent with that code. So you don't need a variance, uh, because there is a coastal development permit that is part of this.
Okay, okay, so, and our, our, and that's why we keep Civic Center Way open for Legacy Park. Okay, um, if, I'll make the motion if Trevor will read, read back what the motion is.
John, um, the, the Pepperdine Lot Fire, have we covered that?
Well, I thought we did with Trevor, but, um, let's see if he's got it.
Is that, you're gonna require a fire extinguishers at each lot? That was the condition.
Uh, we were gonna do it at the, uh,
The Wave Lot.
Wave Lot, and we were gonna require an employee to be, or somebody to be there. Casey said both would happen.
But it'd be important to require regardless.
Yeah, just in case you burn the place down and you get.
And, and Jeff, you, you seem to have strong concerns there. Do you need signage of any kind?
Uh, well, no smoking sign, but, but the other question I had is, is, and maybe Casey can tell me what the surface, uh, of that lot is now. Is it plowed? Is it, uh, covered with weeds, uh?
I can tell you.
Okay, you can tell me, John.
Uh, it's, it's been, uh, it's been disced, but then packed down. It's, it's a parking lot right now.
Okay, that's not, doesn't have, doesn't have, uh, uh, foot high weeds growing on it.
No, 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 it's, it's clean. I went by there. I went to that restaurant maybe two weeks ago and it was clean.
Okay.
Well, we got a couple more months to go before the event, so maybe that we require that it be clean then. With all the rain we're gonna get between now and then, Trevor?
Was there consensus on removing the red flashing light or, or not?
Well, I think there is.
You wanna do a straw vote on that one?
Casey wants it.
Okay with me.
I, I think it's a matter for law enforcement to work as, as needed.
Well, they can all write us their code.
Okay, so it's just not gonna be a condition here, but it.
The condition. I don't want anybody to read that and go flip the light.
See, well, he wants it removed.
No, I want it as a, yeah, I want it removed and it's flash.
Currently a condition, you want it removed.
Yeah, I want number eleven removed.
We, well, you, you don't want it all removed, you just wanna eliminate the flashing red light requirement, condition eleven.
Whatever you need to do.
Okay, here, here's what I believe you guys have on the motion, but let me know if there, if I missed anything. Uh, the staff's recommendation with the following changes. Um, add a condition stating that fire extinguishers and personnel are required to be located onsite at the Wave Lot when it's used for parking. Add, um, a requirement that, um, there, there are posted signs saying masks are recommended but not required. Condition eleven, eliminate the flashing red light requirement. Modify condition fifty-eight to say, two weeks before the event applicant shall provide the planning director with a contact number that will be answered promptly by applicant twenty-four hours a day during the event to respond to concerns and which shall be posted on the city's website. Condition fifteen, um, we're gonna add um, to the first sentence at the end and the south side of Civic Center Way. And then in the second sentence, um, we're gonna add, or the south side of Civic Center Way to the sign language. And we'll also add that language at the end of the sentence to basically clarify that there's no parking on the south side of Civic Center Way also, because it's the same conditions. Uh, and then condition fifty-two, modify the second to last sentence to begin with. The applicant shall be billed for any additional law enforcement charges they may accrue. And then the, the condition continues as it was previously um, stated. Were there any other conditions?
Yeah, we wanted to, uh, uh, have sales tax and parking tax paid within thirty days to the city.
I thought that was in there. Sorry, is that not in there?
No.
You mentioned the mask.
He did.
Yeah.
He did.
And what about the high diver off the tower?
That's a requirement, but they have to pay you five thousand dollars to do it.
We're gonna have a gift of public funds issue.
Hey, Casey has her hand up. Quick, quick question, Casey? Quick comment?
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I just wanna clarify, um, with the flashing red, like that, if, if sheriffs choose to do that, that's not within my control. And that was the scenario previously. So I, you know, while the Planning Commission may condition that, if that does happen, that's not within my control.
It's, the condition is not requiring you to keep it off, it's just not requiring you to have one on. So if, if you do need one, then that would be allowed.
Okay, fantastic. And also, um, previously we were required to provide the parking tax, which has been paid in previous years. So I don't know if that's a new condition, but I do recall that being conditioned previously. So that would be a condition, condition.
Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna add a new condition that's gonna say all sales and parking tax shall be paid within thirty days of the end of the event.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so that's the motion unless anybody wants to amend it, maybe happy to amend it.
Okay, do we have a second for that motion? Or any?
Okay.
Let's mark you.
I'll second it, yeah.
Okay. Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, can we call the roll, please? Rebecca?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Witten?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Sharon Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
I, I move that we adjourn in memory of Harry Gesner. And I said, I think you would all be surprised if you Googled him and read the LA Times article about him.
Yeah, he was, he was a remarkable guy. Um, yeah, thank you.
And do I have a second?
I second that.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Witten?
Yes.
Nice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Uh, you are adjourned?
Aloha.
Good night, everybody.
Hey, all right.